To order at six o'clock. Pledge of allegiance, please. Next item is a roll call.
Okay. Belinda Billings, that's me, I'm here. Jason Borsheim?
Here.
Brian Gally?
Here.
Tom Patel?
Here.
Ron Ritchie? Bill Scarborough?
Here.
Joe Suter?
Here.
We have a quorum, one absent, we have a quorum. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any suggested amendments to the agenda? Not hearing anybody speak up, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting. The agenda of tonight's meetings are available at the entrance. We will conduct the meeting in accordance with that agenda. That, all prior agendas and minutes of the prior meetings are available on the township website. Our state law establishes a planning commission. This planning commission is comprised of seven members, who are nominated by the township supervisor and confirmed by the Township Board of Trustees. Other individuals in attendance at this night, tonight, representing the township are Carlisle Wortman Associates, our planning consultant, Township Engineers Noah K. Frost, Township Legal Attorney, represented by the Kelly Firm, and the Township Planning Director, Brian Ottman. At this, the next item on the agenda is public comment from items not on the agenda. At this time, we'll provide an opportunity for people in the audience, as well as those attending remotely, to comment on items which are not specifically called out on the agenda. The audience will be provided to, an opportunity to comment on specific agenda items, as each item comes up for discussion. So for now, again, this session is limited to just those items not on the agenda. I will open it up to members that are present in person tonight, and then after everyone has had their say, I will open it up to people in attendance remotely. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the podium. Once you're recognized, and state your name and address. Please state your remarks for the benefit of the commissioners. We ask that you attempt to be brief, so we can keep the moving, the meeting moving forward. And ask that you try not to be repetitive of things that have been previously mentioned by other people in attendance. So with that, I will ask if there are any comments from the audience on items not in the agenda. Does not appear to be any? I will ask if any of our remote attendees have anything to say. Okay, having heard none, I will close that public comment session. And we'll move on to public hearings, which we have none, so we will move right from there to regular business. The first item on the agenda is PC File 2023-013, Triad Investments. It's a request for a special land use and a final site plan approval for a sit-down restaurant and bar located on the corner of Sachabah and Pelton. I guess I'll open it up by just some lines and Mr. Kyle, I'll submit comments. Is the fence on the west side decorative on both sides? Screening on the south side of the parking lot that overlooks Oak Vista? And I'm not clear on the lighting plan or the dumpster, so would you like to comment on those?
Certainly. You're correct about all those items. One of the things I want to clarify is a misstatement that I made at the last meeting, which I did indicate to the chair, about the screening wall. It is, it looks like concrete, but it's actually a plastic-type material. Pretty common these days, but it's thick, and in going back and looking at the literature, it does look like some of the, 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 the industry literature, it does look like, like concrete, and it does have the same effectiveness in terms of a sound barrier. So it's ninety-seven percent of the sound is blocked by this solid barrier wall. It just happens to be made out of a hard polyurethane-type material, probably recycled plastics or whatever. Obviously, easier to install in concrete.
On your, on your computer, you have the volume box.
Oh, I do?
Yeah.
All remote people, please make sure your mics are muted.
I thought, I thought we were being invaded. The Russians of, the Chinese have TikTok, you're going somewhere or something like that. And I don't even know what TikTok is, to tell you the truth. But anyway, so that's it. A revised landscape plan was provided that did provide, I think, extensive screening of the berm area. We talked about the efficiency or the, the area in which to install any type of fence there, and it simply, they really, with the berm there, and so I agreed with them that, you know, heavily landscaping that berm was, was going to be suitable. The landscape, the buffering along the westerly screening wall remains, which is also a sound deadening device from that standpoint. We did, I, I, in, in reviewing, further reviewing the site, and I appreciate Commissioner Billings bringing this up actually at the last meeting, there is that solid evergreen buffer on the south side, and it makes no sense to remove any of that to put in additional landscaping because it's some mature vegetation. But the applicant has agreed to put, and it may not just be evident on the plan, but has agreed to put some slat-type of screening in, in the fence of the detention bond. The other issue was the dumpster, I believe, and we, we, we actually think it's a much better idea is to require more frequent pickup than it is to rebuild that entire dumpster because it would require probably the removal of an additional parking space, which we don't believe the site can afford to lose. So from that standpoint, that, that's our recommendation, is you just, you agree to the conditions that they've put in the development agreement. The only issue that was, was not addressed to the condition of the planning commission was the exit drive out onto Pelton. Perhaps Attorney Needon might have some additional things to say about that, as well as Township Engineer. We, we had a lot of discussion about it internally. And I guess one of the concerns, I think that was a legitimate concern, that regardless of how you restrict traffic onto Pelton from internally, if you restrict it to the point where the left-hand turns can't be made, what we're concerned about is that traffic will exit on the Sachabah Road, which is a busier roadway, and make a quick left turn, which is, the, the site, the distance there is extremely limited. Or they'll simply travel down to the next road and travel down through that area. So the commissioner will have to evaluate that, but it seemed like for the cost that would, would acquire in the modification, the disruption of the site, it didn't, it, it would only partially solve the problem and maybe create a worse one. All of these conditions are memorialized in, in the development agreement. I want to make sure that the commissioners are aware that the, the applicant, and I had an extensive discussion about the hours of operation, and they believe that, that what is in this development agreement is what they indicated to the planning commission at the last meeting. I apologize, I told them, I didn't hear that, but perhaps commissioners can, can confirm that they did hear that, that it will be open till midnight. I believe seven days a week. And they may have some more comment about why that's necessary. In a previous document during the weekdays, hours were more limited during the weekdays. But that's, that is the other item that I want to bring to the commission's attention. I think other than that, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's, that was all the items that were outstanding, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just two points of clarification. The lighting plan.
Yeah, lighting plan. Yeah. The lighting that is there now was installed, I believe approximately two years ago. And the only area of that, it does not meet our, and we amended the ordinance requirements after that was installed. The height limitation, and the, for some reason, I think those lights that were originally installed were twenty-five feet, and I think that predated the sixteen or the eighteen-foot requirement that's in the ordinance. Other than that, the, 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 the type of light meets the shielding requirements because it, because with this LED, you put it, what it is essentially is a focus lens. And so it directs the light downward, and that, that in essential, in essence, provides the screening that is needed. They provided a photometric plan, and there is no light spillover at any of the property boundaries. And I, I mean, it'll obviously be up to the commission, but it was our feeling that, with the exception of a slight variation in the K-value, which is the color value, and the height of the light, other than that, it met the lighting requirements. It, it does provide downward directed light, and it is an existing, existing feature of the site that was not too, not, not installed, you know, too long ago from that standpoint.
Question in that regard, then? How many feet taller is it?
It's, they're twenty-five feet, and the current ordinance requires NA. When it's adjacent to a residential zone, it has to be eighteen, it can be no higher than eighteen feet.
And what, what, what do you think the effect is, that is, on the outward, the spread of the light, that additional seven feet?
Well, according to the photometric plan, which I think is accurate, I mean, they, they meet the, the photo, the photometrics meet ordinance requirements. In other words, there's no light spillover on, to neighboring properties, and there's no, you know, we don't permit any concentration of light greater than twenty-foot candles in any given area. So probably the effect of lowering the lights would be minimal. They'd still meet the photometric requirements. They may not meet light levels in the parking lot to the satisfaction of safety and security. We've seen this before, sometimes that means additional lighting has to be installed. So that could be the potential effect.
And if we were to move forward with this and approve something, would ZBA have to grant a variance in that?
I, I think the planning, as, as I've said in my review, I think the planning commission can look at that as an existing non-conformity. I mean, regardless of what happens, it's, regardless of what happens with this approval tonight, you're not, it's not, that light will remain. If they don't, you know, if they're not approved, that light's not going to change because they, they, they receive permits, and it was installed in accordance with township requirements, so. So I think that's, that's sort of a practical way of looking at it from that standpoint.
And second thing on the, on the fence, are you, you did address it. Have you confirmed if it is or isn't decorative on both sides yet?
At least the, the, the product literature shows it as decorative on both sides. I think that they can confirm that, but, you know, this panelized material is identical on both sides.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Anything else? Mr. Lommer, has you got anything you'd like to add?
So our letter remains much, you know, same as what we presented last time, so I won't go through all of that. They did make some changes to handicap parking and accessibility to address some of the concerns that we had. So we are in favor of the changes that were made, and the letter basically identifies the next steps in the process, should this receive approval for construction drawings, to add some grades and a few extra details to wrap that up. And then, I guess, just to touch on the driver approach, and I'll let the applicant speak to this more as well, but they did provide some documentation indicating that they, their clientele is coming from the west and would need to exit to the west, and by doing the, the island and the right turn only that we discussed at the last meeting, it would force the traffic out onto Sachabah and then have them make a left turn, which we agree would be extremely unsafe, given the literature that they provided indicating that they're pulling customers from that way. So we, we support where they're, they're going with that, but I think we'll let them speak more towards why that's important to them. And with that, I could answer any, any questions there are.
I guess what I'd like to do now is just ask the planning commission if they have any questions, anything further you'd like any of these, any of our consultants or, or the applicant to address. I have, I have a few, but you guys go first. Joe?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, minor as they may be. Your report has a little statement in it, that the houses on the south side of Oak Vista are screened from headlight glare, and I assume that's been taken care of, so that's not the question.
Yeah, I don't think, I think with the evergreen trees and.
Well, that's not a question, so I mean, I.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the real question is, exiting onto Pelton, the headlights are right into the neighbor's front living room window.
Yeah.
What are you going to do about that?
I'm, I'm not going to do anything. The applicant would have to address that, of course. And I think that's up to the commission in terms of what you want to require. You obviously can't provide screening within a driveway, and that's where the problem is going to be.
That was just something.
But I'm, I'm confident that.
Worried about one side, but the other side.
Yeah. Mr. Drew.
The, the other question.
I just want to say, I'm confident that the level of landscaping that's going to go onto that berm will provide screening of the headlights from other parts of that parking lot.
Okay.
Okay.
The, and I have no idea about the answer to the question, since I don't frequent those streets down there. But there, the concern was people exiting on Pelton, or they want to use Pelton because they come from the west. Statement, sort of like that, you made. Is, is the traffic actually using Pelton to get to the westerly parts of wherever they're going? Or is it using Maybe? Because what I've heard, and I have no idea whether it's true or not, but somebody who studies this would, that the traffic that gets onto Pelton actually then turns right immediately, or soon after that, and heads north to Maybe Road, and then the left on Maybe Road. So they're going out, down Pelton, through the neighborhood to Maybe, left on Maybe, and that's the way they get to the west. I have no idea.
I think it's, I think it's probably all of the above.
Okay, so Pelton isn't like a, a less traveled road than Maybe, and they're equally able to move people to the western side of the township?
Right, well, it, it's probably somewhat more traveled than, I always forget the name of the road to the south, because there are other land uses along there that are non-residential. And it does provide a, a connection to Maybe eventually. And so that's probably why it would experience more traffic coming from the west, because someone would, would cut off the Maybe-Sachabah intersection possibly, and coming from the western part of the township, or that south, that southern part of the township. We have a lot of neighborhoods in that area.
Right.
South of Maybe, and on the west side of Sachabah. And so it, it might be logical that people would come from the west by way of Pelton.
Okay, and, and, and again, I'm not really familiar with the traffic patterns down in that area. I only bring it up because this is introducing a whole new set of.
Sure.
You know, cars and traffic into the area that it's not now experiencing.
Correct.
So we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I don't think so. But another statement here that got me, and it's yours, not yours personally. It says, however, it will ultimately be the township's responsibility for enforcement, and that had to do with noise and blah, 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 blah. And, and, and one wonders, you know, because I think, I'm going to ask it kind, I think you said it would not be the township's responsibility. If I understood it right, that it would be like the sheriff's responsibility.
After five-thirty, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, so we would.
But the sheriffs, the sheriffs are contracted by the township.
No, I understand that, but I've also heard at the last meeting how the sheriffs visited Fendera twenty times and never gave a ticket out. So one wonders about the, the, you know, how well they do. I mean, and, and if you don't experience any problems with them, that would be nice to know in terms of their enforcement capabilities. I don't, I'd hate to see the township get blasted for non-enforcement of, of things that are causing residents problems that aren't our responsibility.
Well.
They're the sheriff's responsibility.
Let me say one thing, though, is that if, if the township receives complaints, what I think essentially what we're saying is that we don't have enforcement staff in the evening hours for, for code enforcement activities. And particularly if it's a nuisance complaint. And frankly, that could occur with any kind of business. The, the, the appropriate thing for somebody who is filing a complaint is to call the sheriff's department, especially if it's something that people are being unruly, or, you know, intoxicated, or whatever. I don't, you know, and no matter where in the township, the normal thing should be to call the sheriff's department and file a complaint. However, if the township receives chronic complaints about, for example, conditions of approval not being enforced, that is an enforceable item that Brian's office operates on a complaint basis and does address. We do have a full-time enforcement officer, and if, for example, we, we are getting chronic, complaints about chronic noise, which they have committed to, to at least from a management standpoint, monitor it and address it, and it's, if it's not being done, we're just not going to enforce it. We're not going to be able to deal with it at, at the time it happens at night, but we will be able to deal with it, you know, if we know, during normal business hours. And that's, that'll be more direct contact with, with the owners from that standpoint. So I think that kind of clarifies really, what we were trying to point out, and I was trying to point out, was like when things, when circumstances occur at this type of use or any kind of use at night, we're, we're not, Brian's, his office is not here. The normal thing to do is to call the sheriff. It'll place the burden upon the sheriff's office, which is a township responsibility because we contract for police protection. It is the township's contract. It will be the burden of the sheriffs to have to come out and enforce any kind of problem. So it, it does shift the burden to the township.
You all said?
Okay, well, yeah, I, I get somewhat of a hypothetical, I guess. But if we say, okay, we agree with you that Pelton is not the issue we thought it would, is, and the noise is not going to be an issue that we think it might be because it's going to be controlled somehow, and, and if none of these things happen, like, we're kind of like promising the residents it's going to be this way, can we go back and say, block off the Pelton exit a year from now? I mean, are we permitted to do, I mean, I'm saying, if it got to a crazy place, I'm not saying do it just because, but I mean, if it got out of control and the residents were very unhappy, and there didn't seem to be a way to control it, as an example, I'll just use the Pelton Road exit, couldn't we say then close off that exit? You're, you're, you're creating a hazard, you're creating a nuisance for the neighborhood that seems to be uncontrollable.
Yeah, probably not without the cooperation of the owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because unless it's a.
No, I just go on to.
I, I just want to make sure that you understand that unless it's a clear-cut condition of approval, and we'd have to have some measurable.
Understand.
Criteria.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Then there would be no means for us to bring it back. Now, with the other things, such as the, you know, the nuisance aspects of things, which are controlled through better enforcement, yes. And if we're not getting cooperation from the, from the applicant, if we were not getting cooperation from the applicant, and they'd made the commitment to do that, which is in the development agreement, then yes, we do have an enforceable mechanism there.
Mr. Gally?
Just one of the comments of the commissioner was the most affected person on Pelton. I believe he was at the first meeting, you, you guys weren't on the commission yet, and I believe he spoke for the project. His name, obviously. Yeah, he said, I'm the most affected person here, and I'm for, just for your information.
Okay, okay.
But predating you folks, he, he came to the first meeting and spoke out.
Okay, and that's the one I was referring to with the headlights in the family room?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Good, good, now, I did not know that.
That was my understanding, too.
Yeah, I saw that on the video. Anybody others? I still have a couple of issues with the development plan, or agreement, rather. I don't like the reference to Mel's Grill, Fireside Kitchen, Northside Pub. As I said before, I'm not an attorney, but those entities can come and go. And it could be a different owner, it could be under a different name, it could be under anything. I, I want to make sure it's clear that these conditions apply to any person, entity, name, that's operating a restaurant in this location. And I, I don't know if referencing those by name restricts it to just those. I recognize there is a paragraph that says that this agreement applies to all successors and assigns, but I, I don't, I, I will rely on legal counsel, our legal counsel. and assigns, but I don't, I will rely on legal counsel, our legal counsel, to make sure, as long as they know what we're after.
That's a fair point.
I don't, I'm curious about the phrase in line two, one and two referencing "up to" seven days a week. Does that mean something less than that is allowed? So I would want that clarified. And line twelve, is it binding, is this agreement binding? It says it cannot be amended without planning commission approval, but we're not a party to it. So that's, I wanna make sure our legal counsel is aware of those concerns and addresses it on their review. Anybody else got any other questions? If not, I'll let Mr. Nead speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Yeah, as to the development agreement, I have no issue with any of the changes they're suggesting, and I will work with somebody from Mr. Kelly's office to make sure that the final version has that addressed.
Okay, okay. Would the applicant like to make some comments?
Okay, I'm gonna try and only touch base on things that have been...
Just for the record, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jim O'Hern.
We know.
Yeah. Thank you for taking time out of your schedules again today. This is an existing building. We have agreed to more frequent garbage pickups, so there's not a need for, in addition, a bigger space. We have plenty of ability to up the frequency with that. The Pelton ingress egress, if you could go to page twenty, Brian, on our packet here, it kinda shows exactly what we were talking about in terms of making it more of a dangerous situation, and per the, what we submitted to the commission, per the fire marshal, you cannot block the Pelton ingress egress for the emergency vehicles, and that's why that was put in there. I'm gonna explain.
I'm Keith Lutz, I'm with API. We prepared the plans, we're the design build contractor working with Triad. And to add on to that, just in general, I believe that the fire marshal's comment had to do with closing off the entrance, as if that was being suggested, and it has not been suggested until just now. However, even if it was a pork chop style, it would be difficult maneuverability for a fire truck at that point. But the other point I did wanna make is that this is an existing drive that has been there and approved since nineteen ninety-eight. We have a approximately six thousand square foot vacancy in this existing building. There could be any number of businesses that could be open during early evening hours, at which point you would have headlight issues at that time. At a certain point in time, there was. A hair salon, a massage parlor also opening, open during the evening, early evening hours, which at that point, there would have been a headlight issue. So for the most part, it's really just inherent with the site that was approved in ninety-eight.
And the traffic with saying that there's businesses that have operated there already at night, any new business that goes into either one or both of those units is gonna increase traffic in general, because they're units to be available. As far as the up to seven days a week, that is because we are men of our word, and when this agreement gets, you know, approved and signed and that kinda stuff, we do want the ability to close holidays or things like that for our staff. If it were in writing like that, that's something that we had to protect ourselves from, so we could close, and it didn't have to be up to that, but we wanted the ability to have that. So if that answers your question with that. This project stands to benefit a lot of people in this community, and we will continue to always be open ears to anybody that adversely affects and anything like that. We'll always, all the neighbors here that we've talked to, they all have our number. We reach out, anytime they've reached out, we've immediately responded in any way possible and that kinda stuff. And the last thing I wanted to say is, Mel's has the ability to just stay open right now, and none of this gets improved in the site, none of that kinda stuff happens. The fence that's there now is inadequate. The fence that we are putting in is the top of the line, it is decorative on both sides, just to clarify that, and it is basically the most amount of money we could spend on that kind of fence for sound deadening. And we chose that option over cheaper options to be as best of a neighbor as we possibly could be. So without repeating a bunch of information, that kinda stuff, that's kinda our response.
Question regarding the hours, would you be willing to cut back your hours on Sunday through Thursday?
No, we cannot do that. For this project to be viable and to keep costs down as much as possible for the people in the surrounding neighborhood and that kinda stuff, to get staff to get there full time and that kinda stuff, a minimum of eight hours is really what needs to happen for a restaurant. It's not like a very profitable industry, I'll say.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I'll give the public an opportunity to address this. Somebody? Okay. This is not a formal public hearing, but it's been our practice to give the audience a brief opportunity to speak, so if any, you two, thank you, gentlemen. If anybody would like to come to the mic, as I said before, please state name and address and, so raise your hand, you'll be recognized, and come on up. One person, so there's no doubt who it is.
Okay.
Come on up, if you would. Don't forget name and address, for the record.
Okay. It's the first one I got to attend, 'cause I just moved from Florida. I did send in a letter. My name is Nicole Johnson. Address, not technically, but I live at four four six four Pelton Road, Clarkston four eight three four six. Okay. So I live right across the street from Mel's. I'm buying my grandma's house, and she is, if you know the location, there's a mint greenhouse on the corner of Sashaba and Pelton. I'm the neighbor to him. He's lived there since his grandmother bought that land. My grandparents built their house there. I'm gonna tell you, the traffic there is terrible. Like, I lived in Florida for a year, but I just moved back. I've lived in that house for a long time. The traffic on any given day at rush hour is terrible. They've been talking about expanding Sashaba that far down forever because of Pine Knob, so I'm telling you, it's bad. And I don't, nobody is going to be cutting down, okay, well, I take that back, they will if there's a bar, but people will be cutting down Waterford Road, which is a dirt road, Heath, Frankwill, Drayton, to get to Pelton Road, to bypass Maybe and Sashaba, because the traffic's bad. That neighborhood is full of kids. I've worked at the schools around here. I know those kids. Like, I have kids who live there. No way do we wanna bar. And drunk people going through the neighborhoods, there's no way. It's already bad. I try to go to church on Sunday mornings, that's okay, that's the only time I can turn left onto Sashaba. Otherwise, it takes a while. I, not to be nasty, but I don't think a lot of their traffic's gonna be coming from the west, because Clarkston has better bars already open that they can go to. I don't, our traffic's gonna be coming from Pontiac, and like I said, there's just so many kids who live around there. It's, there's tons of kids. One family I know has like seven foster children on one of those roads, so. Okay, so Sashaba will be the main route, and that's already a mess. My dad was just, he just retired as a police officer. He worked in Clarkston for most of his career, and they despise noise complaints, just, we don't wanna anger our police officers, and they hate getting noise complaints. I guess I just wanna say, like, let's not pretend that opening a bar in this location is a benefit to our community. Like I said, we already have other bars. This is not a normal business. I hear them talk casually, like, oh, yeah, it's just, any other business, you're gonna have traffic, you're gonna have headlights. It's not the same. Nobody in this whole community complains about Mel's being open. We love Mel's. Everybody loves Mel's. There's fundraisers held there, that's like a community icon, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. That is not the same as having a bar. Bars, in my opinion, they benefit no one but the drunks and the owners of the bar, so...
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Vicki Harrison. I live at seven nine two nine Victoria Lane. I live kitty corner from Gateway Park, where the current Mel's Two and Buckshot's Bar is. Neighbor, kitty corner, directly across. I have lived in that area for twenty-five years. We have never had a complaint from Buckshot's. Being there, it is a bar and grill. You may go there any night, you will see families with their children, the same, and that is considered a bar and grill. There are not a problem with people in the parking lot running into the neighborhoods. These people are adults. We are not going to have kids coming to a high-class establishment. That happens at Buckshot's. There are families, there are people there. It is a very family-oriented business, as will Fireside Beach. We have not had any complaints in the neighborhood because of Buckshot's or Mel's in that area. Just, I just wanted to let you know, as a neighbor, there are not drunks running around the neighborhood. It's just not that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online like to say anything? Okay, commission members, what's your flavor? Somebody ready to make a motion?
You know, whatever motion you're gonna make, this is a dual request, site plan and special land use. It is my personal belief that I think they should be made jointly to approve or deny the special land use and site plan, not one motion or the other. I don't wanna run the risk of them having special land use approval, but no site plan approval. So that's my personal opinion, technically you don't have to follow it, but just my thoughts.
And Mr. Chairman, that's consistent with past practice. And let's just say two parts of this, because so many of the conditions or standards of approval of a special land use are reflected in the site plan, and that is why we require a site plan to be submitted concurrently with all special land uses. Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I directly question to Mr. Ottman?
Yes, you may.
Is everything ticked and tied and, you know, all sewn up, all the little loose ends that were hanging out last week and the week before? The technical issue, you know, lighting, we heard lighting, but I mean, you know, this, that, and the other thing. Are you satisfied?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry if I'm interrupting, but I was trying to raise my hand, and I had a sick child, so I wasn't ready. I was trying to...
Okay.
From the public.
Name and address, please.
Interrupt. My name is Noel Akers, and I'm at four five seven five Pelton. I'm the direct neighbor on Pelton Road that shares the fence line with the parking lot. I just wanted to say that in the plans that the owners of Mel's Grill provided, they were asked to take down the six-foot privacy fence fifteen feet from the road to provide visibility for those turning onto Pelton. I understand that is a safety issue, and that's great. On Super Bowl Sunday, a truck and a trailer parked on our lawn completely blocking any visibility for those that were exiting the parking lot. My husband did send in pictures, not sure if anybody saw them, but I have no doubt that this will continue to happen over the summer, with the trucks and the trailers coming from the tracks. They come from Waterford Road, down to Pelton, to Sashaba, and why wouldn't they wanna stop and get a bite to eat? But where are they gonna park a truck and a trailer in the parking lot? Excuse me, sir, I lost my place as I was taking notes. Mr. O'Hern did go out and address the patron, but the patron was inside for enough time to finish his meal, which I'm grateful, he did take action, but I think that it was a little bit too late, and it's gonna provide, and this is just one example of the potential of the blocking of visibility that's going to be happening, in my opinion, regularly. The traffic, as Vicki has stated, will increase down Pelton and through the neighborhood, because people will usually be using the subdivision as a cut-through to avoid Sashaba. If they have one or two drinks, they're not gonna wanna just left on a bar, they're definitely gonna turn onto Pelton, cut through all of those subdivisions, and as the daylight extends, there's gonna be kids outside playing later and later. And it just takes, and I've said this before, and she says it, one or two drinks, your reaction time goes down, and a ball flies in the throat, and then what could happen? Even our neighbor Ben, the one that was mentioned before, in the very first meeting, stated, and he said that he thinks this affects him the most, which I don't think it affects him any more or less than it does my family, he even stated that if he looks over and sees Sashaba busy, he's gonna cut through the neighborhood. So as a resident, that's, he's going to do that. The patron of a bar or a restaurant, why wouldn't they draw the same conclusion and cut through the neighborhood well to avoid Sashaba? The hair salon and the massage parlor we touched on, they did not open past nine when no ordinances come into effect. Plus, the amount of clients that can go to a salon or a massage parlor is significantly less than at the restaurant. The owners have worked with us. They are wonderful people. They are wonderful to the community. They have been open, they have been more than willing to hear my husband, who has been meeting with him, but it doesn't mean that we, the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, are going to be happy with a bar and a restaurant right next door. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Belinda?
May I ask a question of Ms. Akers?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I unmute?
I just wanted to know how long you've lived at that location, Ms. Akers?
Fourteen years, so I'm pretty familiar with the traffic patterns and everything that's been on here. I was a home mom for eight of those years, and now I work at Pine Knob Elementary as a garden aide, and my three children live there. So I am home a lot. I am a homebody. I play in the yard with my kids constantly. We're out there all summer long, and that's another concern of mine. Yes, there's a fence, and it's going to be beautiful, way better than the one that we have there now, and I'm grateful for that if it comes to fruition, but it's not going to block every little bit of noise. Yes, help, but I'm still gonna hear car horns. I'm still gonna hear the locking of the car doors. I'm still gonna hear cell phone conversations through Bluetooth. These are things that I hear now, but because it's during the day, it doesn't bother me. If I wanna have a bonfire and make s'mores with my kids at night, I'm going to hear and see all of these things, and it just, it's a neighborhood. Despite what people have said, it is a neighborhood setting. It's surrounded by residences. It's just, I think it's a great concept. I think the menu is amazing, everything about it looks wonderful, but not for the neighborhood, not for this location.
Thank you. Commission members? Anybody?
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody? Applicant, did you wanna respond to any of those comments?
So my name is Joe O'Hern, and I am one of the owners at Mel's Grill. So it figures that after, I've never seen anybody park on the road ever in the fifteen years we've owned that location. It happened, right? Right now, the parking lot's unmonitored, right? There's no cameras, we can't see. The only reason I caught it was because I went outside, I was driving between the restaurants, and I saw it, and I immediately pulled right back into that restaurant, grabbed my general manager and said, "We're going table to table to find who this is," and they have to move it immediately. And they have to move it immediately. We found the table, and the guy's wife was pretty irate with him for parking there, and she said, "I told you not to park there. You can't park there, okay?" He immediately got up. He didn't finish his meal. He immediately got up and went and moved his vehicle. I walked out with him. I noticed the Akers outside, and I went over and I apologized. I said, "I don't know. Go figure." I said, "This never happens." And it happened. There was open spots in the parking lot. He had a large stroke with a large trailer. It's just hard to get in and out of any parking lot with that kind of a vehicle. But it, you know, we, you know, I guess more than anything is, it shows that we will do what we say we're gonna do. You know, I know, we noticed the problem. Did it get noticed fast enough? Probably not, because we don't have the cameras right now. We want to put the cameras in with this project. And we went out and we took care of it immediately, so.
Something else I'd like to say is Pelton is a public road, so anyone can choose to use a public road anytime for any reason. The gas station right next door, which is open till eleven o'clock, sells alcohol. That's not a surprise to anybody. It's literally next door. The people that purchased a, a house next to a commercial property, that is something that those people signed up for, and we're doing our best to mitigate the, the, the conditions that come along with that. And we're doing the best we can, but at the same time, we didn't choose for that house to be put there and for, you know what I mean? So, it kind of goes both ways in that regard. We're doing the best we possibly can on that, on that accord. So, that's what we'd like to respond with. One last thing is, the master plan for 2030 for Independence Township does show that they want to rezone our specific property to have fine dining already in, in the master plan. So, that's something that the township is looking to already move towards. We're just a couple of years early, so just want to throw that out there.
I'd like to say something. Uh, I'm Jacob Habermas. I'm, uh, the GM at Buckshot's. Been running it for eight years now. I, I have no problem. It, the, the way that we operate businesses speaks in volume. The way, what Joe said at, at Mel's and, and the testimonial we had from other people about how we, how we operate, we're not just gonna let stuff happen. It's just not, I'm there all the time. It's, it's, we take very much pride in, in, in established business. It, it's not like we're just gonna let riffraff come in and drink and park wherever they want and do whatever they want. It's, that's not what we're trying to do. We, this, this was an answer to Mel's being open late, and, and us together thought that a restaurant would be a good idea in place of Mel's. And as far as our integrity goes, it's bar none, and I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Thank you.
The majority of the room here is tired of this for us, and we asked them not to basically talk because we don't want to waste the time. After the first meeting, when a lot of people spoke on our character. So, thank you.
Commission members?
I guess I'll try a motion and see where it goes. If that's okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, case PC file two zero two three dash zero one three, petitioner Triad Investments. Location four five 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 Pelton Road, Claxton, Michigan. Would like to motion that we grant special land use and final site plan approval with, uh, special note that the lighting height is pre-existing and that the legal agreement of operation addressed the chair's concerns on, uh, language that were commented. Also, take note all of the reports by our staff, Carlisle Wartman and, uh, Jason Longhurst. That's it.
Can I ask you to add? Finding under section ten point one oh of the township ordinance is to waive the parking requirements for both restaurant uses as they will be open during different times and can share parking. Uh, Mr. Carlisle has recommended we include that in the motion. We, we recognize it.
I will, uh, accept the chair's addition to my motion.
And, and, uh, additional screening on the fence, uh, facing Oak Vista.
Is the, and that's not shown on the plan currently?
I don't believe it is.
We didn't see it.
Okay. And also amend it showing the additional screen fence to be added on the chair's recommendation.
Anybody else got any significant change? Do we have a second?
A second.
Got two seconds.
That's four.
Hey. Let's do a roll call.
So, roll call, Linda Billings, I say yes. Jason Borsheim?
Yes.
Brian Galley?
Yes.
Tom Patel?
Yes.
Bill Scarborough?
Yes.
Joe Sujer?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to ask one favor. Please bring back your, um, I think they were apple smoked wings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. We'll take a, a pause here to clear the audience.
Thank you all very much.
Guys, ready? Next item on the agenda is PC file two oh two four dash zero zero one, revision to section two point oh two. Definitions and section five point one oh, home occupation. To regu, the purpose is to regulate short-term rentals under a new chapter ten, article four.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before Mr. Carlisle reports, I, can I have a quick point of order on this?
Yeah.
Subject? Uh, just a couple of quick comments. On February twenty-fourth of this year, there were emails circulating regarding this case. One township board member and one planning commission member replied to all the emails with their thoughts relating to this case. On this email chain, every single township board member was on the email chain, every planning commission member, township staff, township consultants, and from my town, about ten to fifteen people from the subdivision in question. Some thirty emails in total were included on the email chain. My first point, this is in direct violation of the Michigan Open Meetings Act law. Township officials, township consultants, township staff cannot reply to other members. It, it's, it's a violation of the law. Both emails were sent by individuals with experience in government, to me, which makes it more troubling. One of the people who sent the emails, um, you know, this is multiple violations for him doing the same thing, so it, it, it's a pattern, and that makes that particular one more troubling. These emails can also cause influence on other commissioners and board members that may have been appointed or had conversations with these people to influence them to prejudge the case or ordinance or whatever it is we're looking at, and that's also a violation of the law. Every single person that has a short-term rental in this township currently now, I, I'm not a legal expert, but in my opinion, now they have a case to litigate the township if they feel they've been harmed by any ordinance change that affects them, which puts the township at great risk. At a minimum, I guess I'll respect what a township attorney would say or staff or consultants would say, but I, to me, it at least warrants recusal from this case for any commissioner or township board member who has, um, you know, spoken to others a, about this. You know, and, and just, I don't know, with this happening in full daylight, uh, being on this planning commission for twelve years, it's only happened twice, and it, it was last year with one individual, this year with the same individual and another individual, so, I mean, it's, it's not right. It shouldn't happen. So, that's all I have.
With that comment, I'd ask our legal counsel to respond to that. And, and while she's walking, I would say, I don't know how the person who originated that got our email addresses. I do not, whoever it was, I don't think it was anybody in this room. But whoever it was, I do not appreciate anybody giving out my personal email addresses. I, I, under open discussion later, I do, had planned on talking about email addresses, so I'll talk some more about that later. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. Morgan Mack Tammy, it's nice to meet all of you. This is my first time here from the Kelly Firm. Uh, I agree, that is a, a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Um, it's an ex parte communication. It's a very clear quorum communication outside of a public hearing and a public meeting, um, which is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. There's, there's no doubt about that. Normally, in this situation, I would advise that any person that's had such communications disclose those. So, in the context of any deliberations on this matter, I would advise that those be disclosed. I would say normally, I wouldn't mandate recusal. However, in this situation, obviously, I don't have these emails. I was not a party to that chain, so I don't know exactly what was said. It sounds like it's quite serious. And if this commission feels strongly about that, the commission can move to recuse that member from these deliberations. Uh, if they feel that it's a conflict, they, you, you all as a commission certainly can do that. If the individual would like to voluntarily speak and recuse themselves, they can do that as well. It's not an obligation under the Open Meetings Act, but it, it sounds like there are some serious violations here that need to be addressed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Would it be helpful if tomorrow I forwarded the chain to you, if, if I still have it? I don't even know if I still have it.
Certainly. That would be very helpful.
I, I, personally, I don't remember if I, I, I responded to the originator and asked him where he got my email address. And he refused to politely, I don't want to say he was, he politely refused to provide that information. I don't remember if I responded in any other way. I, I don't think so, but I'll have to check. Any other comments, questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You all set?
Yep. I just wanted to...
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, well, this is now the second time that this has been before the planning commission. Uh, I took the comments that I heard at the last meeting and attempted to address them. Again, just as an overview, this is a two-pronged approach. This is a zoning ordinance amendment that clearly identifies, uh, short-term rental as a, as a home occupation use, which by law means it's, it's ancillary or accessory to the principal residential use of the property. In our residential, one of the things I was thinking about today to point out to you in, 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 uh, uh, support of this approach is that we have very, uh, limited number of non-residential uses in our residential districts. And predominantly, those are all special land uses, such as daycare centers, group daycare homes, uh, schools, uh, churches, or places of worship, excuse me. And that gives, obviously, there's a high degree of discretion on the part of the planning commission to ensure those non-residential uses are compatible with residential use of the property. And now, given rise in state of Michigan in many different areas, what we have is, uh, you know, uh, circumstances where people who still live in the home rent it out temporarily for short-term rental. And yet, on the other hand, we also have circumstances where you have people who are simply purchasing, uh, homes in a single-family district and simply running that as a accommodation business. To me, there's a huge distinction when that occurs. In essence, what you've done is remove it as a, as a principal residential use of property, and now you are actually, uh, running a accommodation business, a commercial business in a residential neighborhood, which without permission in the ordinance or without special approval of the planning commission is impermissible, okay? So, to me, the best approach is, is to call it what it is, uh, is to, 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 to restrict it, to allow it, but to restrict it as a home occupation where, as a ancillary use of the principal use of the dwelling where somebody lives in that home, they can, uh, they may be able to apply for and receive approval to allow for a short-term rental use of that property. So, what this does in two cases is, on the first instance, it defines in the zoning ordinance a new category of, of home occupation. We, that'll now be the third sort of general category as short-term rental and places certain restrictions on its occupancy and things like that, but also makes reference then to something that is more of a regulatory ordinance that will be part of the general ordinance that would require that short-term rental to be registered and to meet certain standards of the township that are outlined in the ordinance. Registered with the, with the, uh, building official, receive a zoning occupancy permit as a home occupation from the planning official, and, uh, meet certain criteria that will be good for two years, okay? Provided, you know, it is all, uh, it is all done in accordance with the ordinance. I've limited the total duration, um, uh, let me see here. I've limited the total, uh, occupancy because this was something that came up, uh, to, I said, you know, originally said two per bedroom, but I, I, I eliminated it to, uh, no more than a total of six adults. Uh, I've limited the parking. I've eliminated, uh, employees other than members of the immediate family. Those are all the zoning ordinance provisions, which are very similar to other types of home occupation types of standards in most zoning ordinances, okay? And they are also subject to all of the other standards, uh, with some exception of the, uh, of our home occupation standards. In the rental ordinance, uh, it's, it's, it's obviously a lot more detailed in the fact that this is a, it, it is a registration with restriction. In other words, you, you have to get dual approval. You have to be approved by the zoning administrator as a home occupation meeting these criteria. And second of all, um, you, um, you know, you have to comply with, with the, the provisions of the general ordinance for short-term rental. That requires it to be registered, requires that there, there be an agent, that that agent's name be available for, uh, to have complaints answered, that there are certain physical things that need to be present in the structure to ensure its safety, and, and things of the like. So, um, the, the, the general ordinance, the regulatory ordinance is probably something more standard that you would see in communities that are regulating short-term rental with, obviously, with some modifications that we felt, based on your comments, and I felt were necessary. The approach on the home occupation is, is a unique approach, but I think it's, it's one that addresses this issue. For, for many years, our legislature has considered legislation that classify, uh, resident, uh, short-term rentals as residential uses of property. And, and the problem is, has been that they've, of course, wanted to limit local government oversight of that. To me, in this case, it makes it very clear. It is a residential use of property because only a home occupation can occur in a residential unit. So, it makes it very clear. It's, it, you know, it is a residential use of property, but it's a home occupation because you're running a commercial business out of there. Something that somebody else, uh, raised, and I want to make this clear, is, it's, is that, um, what, what is the, really, the criteria of, of who a resident is? Well, under Michigan, uh, under Michigan law with the Homestead Exemption Act, uh, you have to live in that residence at least six months out of the year to be able to claim a homestead exemption. So, that is how I have defined what a permanent resident is. I think that, I do that because I think it's something that is, you know, defensible in the law. I'm not talking as an attorney, by the way. But it is defensible as, as a standard because it is what you have to have to be able to claim a homestead exemption. Otherwise, you have to pay, you know, the full commercial rate of tax on a, on a residential structure, so. So, that's the approach. Um, I, I listened very carefully to the comments that were submitted by both the commission and members of the public, and, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I would like to, I think you answered this, but so does the short-term rental homeowner retain homestead exemption?
If they, if, yes. Yeah, because they need to, they, you know, to, one, to be a permanent resident by this ordinance, they have to live there at least six months out of the year, so yes.
And then, how does the township regulate only ninety days per year? I mean, how would we know how many days are leasing?
We, we, we retain the, I don't, you know, I don't know exactly. I did take, speak to the assessing department about this. I mean, we, you know, we are the ones that have to assess the taxes, so we know who has the homestead exemptions and who doesn't.
No, but I'm saying, if I'm leasing my property out as a short-term rental, and you say you can only do it for ninety days max per year, what's to keep me from thinking, ah, they won't notice, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna do it six months out of the year, you know?
They would be in violation of their permit.
But is there someone checking on that?
Well, they, not now, but there will be, when, now that we have, we put this ordinance in place, that there can be inspections made, and that obviously, if we receive complaints and we find out that it's being violated, they're subject to having their permit revoked, so yes.
I, I guess my, still, my question would be, how do you verify? I mean, I mean, a neighbor could make a complaint, but how do you verify? Oh, you're, you've done that a hundred and twenty days this year instead of ninety?
Yeah. I mean, there's, there are things in zoning that you often can't verify completely. So, it is, it is not, it's not an easy, it's not an easy circumstance.
Yes.
Just to get this straight in my head, the state allows rental property as a residential use? Is that what you were saying?
No, no, I, I didn't, I didn't say.
I'm sorry if I, I'm just trying to get, and so we're, we're doing a, like an ordinance.
No, what I'm saying is, is that for years, the legislature has tried to exempt local government from regulating short-term rentals by claiming it's, it's just another residential use of property. Obviously, we, the municipal, Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Pla, Association of Planning, the Michigan Townships Association, the, the Michigan Hospitality Association have all opposed that approach. It is, it is not a residential use of property if you are doing it, you know, on a, on a full-time basis. And in my mind, the only way it can be considered as a residential use of property is in the manner that I am proposing to regulate it. So, it does not prevent, prevent somebody for some reasonable short-term rental use of their property, but it maintains the residential use of that property in a manner that's consistent with other home occupations. So, is that clear now? I know it's a little, it is, it is, it is a complicated issue. But it became more complicated when the legislature started, you know, getting, you know, being pressured by special interest to limit or eliminate local control. Fortunately, that has not happened, because many of us have been fighting that for years, because it is a usurpation of, of local authority. You should have the right to decide, in our opinion.
Who, who would, I mean, I can see why hospital, hotels wouldn't want this. But who would be the interest strong-arming the state?
Michigan Association of Realtors?
It's, it's big business in, in vacation communities. And there, I have one. It's big business. And they're pushing it, and the hotel industry wants it curtailed, and, yeah.
Well, part of the reason is it's unfair competition. They don't pay any hospitality, hospitality tax.
Yeah.
Whereas, you know, a hotel and motel, and even bed and breakfasts and other types of accommodations have to pay hotel tax in the state.
A lot of the tourists that your vacation communities get are staying in Airbnbs and stuff, and.
And, and I have no, I mean, I have no issue with Airbnbs per se. I mean, I've stayed in them myself. But in an unregulated basis, on an unregulated basis, they can have a deleterious effect on residential neighborhoods. If they're not regulated and controlled. And I think what we're doing here is, is a reasonable approach.
Did you say the required permit is one year or two years?
Two years. Two years. Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, well, I was just, you, you said you think it's reasonable. I, I mean, unless I'm reading something wrong, I think it's essentially putting it out of business. But, I mean, if that's the intent. I mean, it being your primary residence, I highly doubt the Clarkston area is a big market for somebody going out of their primary residence to, you know, rent their house by Pine Knob for a Barney concert for a weekend. I mean, it's, I, I do know two people, in full disclosure, I know two people in the township doing this, and that's kind of the exact scenario. One of their grandparents passed away, they live over on Flemings Lake Road, and they advertise it out to a, a Pine Knob thing where people can rent it for concerts. I do understand the one house in particular pushing for this is a huge problem. It's, it's a noise maker and such. I just wonder why we don't give the noise ordinance some, some more teeth. Because ultimately, at, like I said in the last meeting, at midnight, they're not calling Dick Carlisle, Brian Gally, or Brian Ottman, they're calling Oakland County Sheriff to file a noise complaint. It's still the same avenue. So, I, I think the ordinance puts all the good players out of business. And the one bad player, I, I just think there's gotta be some other way to put more teeth into something to get this one bad player out of the market.
Two years, yeah.
Those are my thoughts. I think this kills it.
Suter?
Yes, and I, I would certainly agree that we don't want to put the good guys out for the, for the one bad guy or two. The, in, in terms of tracking this, you know, we talked about the PREs and, and the assessing department, unfortunately, they're probably not going to be a great help, because they, I mean, they have their records, and they know who, of course, you know, has the PRE, but they, their records are updated primarily through the, you know, the sale and purchase of a home. There's, there's no intermediate things. And, and they will take a PRE when you buy a house, and while you may have to live in it for six months to qualify for it, you get it the day you buy the house. I mean, that's the facts. You come down here with the assessing department, you fill out the form, you're on, you know, you're, you're recorded. So, if there is a, some kind of a, a need to be able to track that more closely, I'm afraid the assessing office isn't going to be much help, unfortunately.
Isn't that, is, it's, it's an imperfect approach from that standpoint, but I have no other suggestion for you from that standpoint. I, I have no other, I, I've thought and thought and thought about it, and I don't know of any other way to, to deal with this other than the fact that, basically, if somebody files an application and they represent, you know, that it is their permanent residence, that they live there at least six months a year, they're, they're falsifying an application. And that would be, if, if, if we find out otherwise, that would be, that would be, it would be subject to revocation. That's all I can say. You have to rely, to some degree, you have to rely on people's honesty. I mean, and, and I will say, to a high degree, that's always seemed to work. But you, you know, with, with a lot of uses, in the absence of standards, you can't necessarily expect people to self-regulate if they don't know what they're supposed to do. And it's, and, and then what we have to think about is, look, we, you know, we all are for individual rights, but every single person that lives around that short-term rental has rights also, has the rights to quiet enjoyment of their property when they thought they lived in a single-family neighborhood in which there was not, you know, there was not this type of activity going on. So, the, the people who are responsible, this isn't going to affect at all, other than they may be doing it less, less days out of the year.
Yeah, well, because they're all, they're all not homestead, they're all not primary residences. They're all separately owned.
In the essence, they're, it's, I mean, if, if it's, if it's a short-term rental, they're running a business in a residential neighborhood.
But again, the, the remedy is calling the police late at night. So, it, it doesn't matter if the guy next to you is the property owner. It doesn't matter if he's a long-term renter. It doesn't matter if he's a short-term renter, your call is still to Oakland County Sheriff. And in the middle of the night, that does nothing. So, you're back at square one, at three AM.
But if you have a property where there's chronic complaints, you have no, you have no remedy.
But why can't we just amend the noise ordinance to say if there's a chronic complaint against his property, the fine is ten thousand dollars after the tenth complaint? That'll, that'll make him feel some pain.
That isn't always the, the, the noise isn't always the only issue. Traffic, excessive occupancy, parties in the daytime. I mean, it's, that's not the only issue in, in some cases. And I'm confident that that doesn't happen in, you know, in, in, except for a few cases. But Brian, you, I mean, you, you, most of what we write in zoning is to affect five percent of the, of the problem circumstances, where ninety-five percent of the people comply. It's just, it's your decision in terms of the kind of community that you want to have. It's not up to me to tell you. All I can say is, this is the best approach that I can think of to deal with this issue.
So, if everything puts teeth into it, and this is going to work, so you're telling me this is going to work, what difference does it make if it's homesteaded or not? Why, why is, if it's non-homestead, ah, this ordinance doesn't work? If you throw homestead in there, we got them.
It's no longer, it's not a home occupation. If somebody, if it's not a permanent residence.
But why that, why does that make it work, and then it doesn't work the other way? Because the problem is noise and late at night. That, that, that's ninety-nine point nine percent of your problem. So, why is it, if it's a homestead, the people aren't going to be making noise at night?
It's the only criteria we have to, to measure whether it's a, it is a permanent resident or not who is entitled to have a home occupation. That's, that's.
Can I, can I put your question another way? I think I understand. If, if somebody buys a house, doesn't want to live there, but he rents it out on, only ninety days a year, but he doesn't have the homestead requirement, doesn't that accomplish a lot of what this is doing? Is that?
It could, but to me, I don't see how that ties that to what is considered to be a home occupation. And I think that, that part of it has the most enforceable teeth of all. The fact that we regulate and we allow home occupations that are accessory or ancillary uses. What you're both describing, whether it's ten days or ninety days, is essentially, all they're doing is running a business out of that house in a single-family neighborhood.
Which is fine.
That's all they're doing.
Which is fine, is if you, if you want to eliminate it, I'm saying this ordinance eliminates it. I'm not personally for eliminating it for everybody, but in my view, this ordinance eliminates it. Which, if that's the goal, that's the goal. People can't make money just doing it for ninety days either. And again, it's not like it's a U of M football game where you can rent the house out for a weekend because they're playing Ohio State, and you pocket five grand, like that. It's, that's not this market. This is, you're getting somebody to rent it two weeks, because their daughter's having a baby, and it was your grandparents' home, and you kept it because they passed away. And you rent it out for a couple of weeks here and there, because somebody wants to come in and be with their grandchild for two weeks from out of town, and it's nicer than a hotel. That's my view of it, but this eliminates that. I can't keep my parents' house if something happens to my parents and do that. I just, whatever happens.
Well, again, it's up to the commission in terms of length. I mean, you, you can make that decision.
Well, and that's what I'm doing, is expressing my opinion as a commission member.
And I understand, Brian, and by the way, you know, with all of the circumstances and all the places where we've been faced with this issue, what I'm hearing here is no different than what I'm hearing in other places. It's the same, you know, difference, divergence of opinion.
And I'm an adult, if the other commission members want to pass it, as is, hey, you know, that, that's how it rolls.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying, what I'm trying to verify is, what you're saying is not an unusual argument, so.
Well, I think there's a difference in an investor buying a property to rent out for, you know, a year, as opposed to a homeowner who has a homestead exemption doing the short-term rentals. I personally like the fact that it limits a person with a homestead exemption to ninety days, because, you know, if you want to buy a house and rent it, you have no, you know, there's nothing tying your hands to do that. This is simply for short-term rentals.
And, and I think the differentiation is, again, in terms of a characteristic standpoint, is when somebody rents out their home, you know, they typically do it on a, on an annual basis, okay? They lose their homestead exemption when they do that. But at least you have a permanent residence in there for at least a period of time. The, the, the issue, the here, the thing I hear most about short-term rentals in the communities that we represent, it's the turnover, it's the transients. It's, it's the people in the neighborhood that, that you don't know, you know? It's, it's the number of people in the neighborhood that you don't know. It's all of those kinds of things, and that's the thing I hear that is most distressing to residents that live in an area where there, there is a short-term rental. I have property up on, you know, the Osavo River. Two doors down, our neighbors have a short-term rental, but they live there. They're there all the time, and I have never had a problem with anything that they've ever done. And if I did, we'd just talk about it, you know? So, this makes that distinction, in that it's, it's, it's the people who are using short-term rentals strictly as a business that are, are probably what creates more of the difficulty than people who are doing it on a casual basis.
So, what if the owner has another house in Independence Township? So, their primary is in an Independence Township. Using my scenario again, they keep their grandmother's home. They're a resident of Independence Township. They want to keep it nice, they're here.
But they're not home, they, they can't, you can't have two homestead exemptions.
When they rent their house out, they leave. Hey, let's go see grandma in Florida for a week and rent the house out. They're in Florida. That's the scenario. You, you, ninety days, okay, so, so, what are they called, snowbirds, bluebirds, I forget?
Snowbirds.
The snowbirds go to Florida for their ninety days, and they rent the house out here for a short-term rental. They're in Florida, Brian's going to call them in Florida, hey, you got to get back here, there's a big dog at your rental. I mean, come on.
Well, that's why you have a registered agent.
This doesn't cure anything, is my point. It's just, it's frosting on a cake. It's just makes sweeter.
Brian, you handed this out. Can you talk about what this is?
Yeah, sure, that was, uh, one of the, the residents in, up in Fandera wanted this to be passed out to the commission, just his comments, because he wasn't able to be here tonight. So, you know, just, there's some minor comments, but he's got some questions here. How does the township know about a complaint that triggers this response time? That's having to do with responsibilities. What are the consequences if things aren't met? How are violations recorded by the township zoning administrator? That's all handled through our BSNA permitting system that we use now and through our GIS system. Who's responsible for monitoring the entire ordinance? It's going to be between our code enforcement officer and our building official working on these. So, again, a lot of this relates to the issues going on at Fandera Park.
Yeah, okay.
So, they're more, they're more targeted towards that.
I, I just want to say, you know, this is, this is where I live. This is my home. And I, I like this approach, because I agree with Mr. Carlisle, it's a business. If you're, if you're buying a property strictly for short-term rental, you're not going to live there, it's a business. Now, if they pass this ordinance in Port Sound, like Michigan, I'd be ticked off. But that's a different community, okay? It's a different community. It is a people, it's a temporary community. And I'm sure the people up there, yeah, they, they may see it that way, but this is different. And, and I like it. I think, I do honestly think it's going to be an enforcement issue, and it'll be tough. And we'll be relying on neighbors who complain to tip us off, and, and that's the way it's going to go. So, that's my thoughts. Mr. Suter?
Yeah, and I agree with that, it's going to be an enforcement issue. But sometimes, you know, even if you only get ten percent, and to get corrected, or, you know, whatever the penalty is going to be, you know, the word gets out, and then that pressure starts, and then maybe things will get better, even if you don't have a hundred percent enforcement. So, I mean, you gotta just do what you gotta do, and, and hopefully, it works out for the best. And you just keep trying. I don't know of another way. You know, there aren't any solutions, like you say, not any concrete solutions that are going to catch every case and prevent it, which would even be better.
Anybody else?
I just, I just think that statement sums up government. Oh, we think it'll work ten percent of the time, sure, let's do it. I just, it's, doesn't make sense to me.
I had a couple specific comments or questions. The homestead, you're not actually requiring them to prove they have a homestead exemption. That's just, so a snow, a guy that, who's made his homestead in Florida, as long as he's here six months a year?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that was what. But that, I mean, that was what, I talked to the assessing department and that's, that's what the criteria is to claim a homestead exemption is six months. So whether they claim it here or claim it somewhere else, it doesn't matter. If they live here six months, by definition in this ordinance, they are a permanent resident. I don't talk about homestead exemption anywhere in here.
Okay, I get it.
Well, wait, can we back up on that? If it's not in the ordinance, why did we say all that?
All I'm saying is, is the permanent resident is somebody that lives there for six months.
And you're defending that position because you, you arrived at that by the homestead exemption?
Right.
So you think you've got, yeah, okay.
So if someone is using a short-term rental for seven months out of the year, they should not be claiming a homestead exemption?
No, they can't.
Or they should be, they should have revoked if they do.
And, you know, if you think that we have trouble enforcing things, the state of Michigan has even bigger problems trying to enforce stuff like that too, so.
I, I have, I have a question about the ninety-day limit. I, I, in, in a lot of cases, I wonder if it's, could be a little longer. But the problem, I really have a problem with it is if there's a person who has an in-law schedule or a separate bedroom and they're a resident there and they're living there and they need to make a little more money and they wanna rent it out three hundred and sixty-five days a year on short-term rentals, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know how you work that in to, but in reality, I, yeah, is he, if he's there and if he's managing it and, and, yeah, and it's.
How would you consider that a short-term rental?
Well, it's still, he rents it a week or a day at a time. So he's turning over.
Would it be by billing? I mean, is there, isn't there a way that you could phase this where there's one tier and another tier? I, I don't know.
You don't have to answer that now.
No, but let me, let me just say this. I, I, I mean, as, as complicated an issue as this is, I've tried to make this a straightforward approach as possible. But one, by, by classify it as a home occupation, which is, should be understandable to everybody. And it's already well-established in the law and in our zoning ordinance regarding what a home occupation, what constitutes a home occupation. Second of all, you know, this is predominantly an ordinance of registration, obviously with some other criteria regarding, you know, minimizing nuisance and, and, and promoting the safety of the occupants. But it's primarily an, an ordinance so that we can have a means to address where there are complaints. And, um, and so again, you can decide the number of days however you want. I put ninety in there because I think that's kinda what I heard at the last meeting. You can make it more, you can make it less. I, I don't, that is not, that is your issue. That is for you to decide. But I'm trying to make this a pretty straightforward approach and, and not be punitive to the people that are doing it, but still require that if they're gonna run a home occupation as a short-term rental, and frankly, I mean, it's, these are different than, these are, have potentially more effect than most of the home occupations we have in this community. Home offices, we've more or less deregulated those, they're still a home occupation. We don't require any permits. We do require that they, you know, meet certain standards. And if we get a complaint, we deal with it. So, I mean, um, well, I think I've said all I need to say.
A couple of other comments. Does the maximum occupancy of six adults refer to just renters or renters and residents and owners? I think you need to clarify that.
Okay. That, that was intended to be, uh.
Renters.
Yeah, that was intended to be only, yeah, that was only intended to be for the short-term.
I, I figured that, but I think, I think it, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm wondering, if the agent is somebody other than the owner, should we require a copy of the management agreement?
Um, I don't, I, I think you could. That really starts to get us into a, into a, a deep set of weeds that I don't know if we even have the capability to.
I just see a situation where a guy who's usually there and he leaves town and rents it out and he says to his buddy, wait, will you watch my place for me?
Well, it has to be disclosed. The resident agent has to be part of the application.
Or the permit.
Yeah, it has to be that person, we have to know who that person is. So it's, it's kinda their problem if they end up having to deal with a lot of problems if they've agreed to be their buddy's resident agent. So I don't think we need to see the.
Okay.
The management agreement, we just need to know who that resident agent is and how we get a hold of them.
And then my final comment is, I, I think in addition to the, the, uh, response time for the agents and stuff, I think there should be a distance of, I would suggest thirty miles.
Okay.
Just a thought. Anybody else in the commission have any comments?
I have a comment.
Yes?
We're, we're from originally Arlington, Texas is where the Dallas Cowboys and Texas Rangers are. Um, go boys.
We will comment on that.
Anyway, they have an entertainment district around the stadiums and those are the only areas in the city where you can have short-term rentals. And the only reason I'm saying that is because before, um, the stadiums were built, there are some beautiful homes in North Arlington, very expensive homes, but when the stadiums came in there, they were renting them out to twenty, thirty people at a time. And it's not just the noises, trash, uh, you know, people drinking a lot and partying, being loud and I, I, I understand, although with this, I see what you're saying, Brian, also, if, if you're doing this for a business, but I, I would just think that if you're gonna do this for a business, it not be in your typical bedroom community residential because I think it can be offensive to neighbors. So I like the plan you put together, but I think I would change it to a hundred and twenty days. But still, I think enforcement is gonna be the biggest issue. There really needs to be some teeth in the enforcement of this and, you know, where neighbors can call and complain and, and permits can be withheld or revoked if they don't, you know, live up to their end of the deal.
Okay. You know, when, when we have specific comments like that, I'm gonna need consensus from the commission in order to make those kind of changes. Just so that, so I don't misinterpret anything anybody says.
All right, let's back up then. Let's talk about that one.
Okay.
What does everybody feel about the timeframe? Well, well, let's, let's start big picture. How many people here like the idea of the way he's structured? I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I am too.
Yep.
Okay. And, you know, before we conclude this, I, I am gonna give the public opportunity to speak. Okay, so let's go to the, the ninety versus a hundred and twenty or something in the middle.
Ninety's good. No, I'm, I'm just going with ninety.
Ninety, you like ninety?
Yeah.
One-twenty sounds better.
One-twenty.
I'm happy with the suggested ninety.
You like that, Brian?
One-twenty.
One-twenty. Why don't we split the difference?
Hundred and five?
Well, round it up, you know, or down. You're getting clear direction, you, I, you're getting some direction.
Well, you may wanna hold that, listen, I'm, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna, I mean, tell you right now, when you have a public hearing on this, it's gonna be a big role.
I'm sure it is.
So you might want to just hold off on that particular thinking until you hear what the public has to say.
How about the thirty miles for the agent? Everybody like that idea?
I like that.
It's just a whole other enforcement thing though. It's impossible.
Well, you, you, like you said, you will see it on the application.
The spirit, I think the spirit of that is just simply what, that the response time will be quick.
Right.
We have to design something so where we think the spirit of this is helping the neighbors that have the complaints.
Where I am in Port Sanalac, the, the city of Port Sanalac passed an ordinance and it, and they require the agent to be within thirty miles. And that's what gave me the idea. Was my own creativity.
I'm sorry, I, I was, Brian was whispering earlier. I'm sorry, what was that?
Quit it, Brian. The thirty miles and, and, and Mr. Borsheim said it, you know, this, it's the spirit of being able to respond and.
That's, that's why I put time in there rather than miles because.
I like both. I, I mentioned that in.
Okay.
In Port Sanalac, that's what they require, thirty miles.
Why don't we keep both in there, say must be located within thirty miles and capable of responding within sixty minutes?
Okay.
I like that.
Okay.
Okay. I'll give anybody in the audience opportunity to speak, this, this is not a public hearing. I, at some point, you correct me if I'm wrong, um, we will have a formal ordinance proposed and we will have a public hearing here. And if we can get it through here, then it will go to the board and they will have a public hearing, correct?
No, it's first and second reading.
Yeah, they'll have first and second reading.
At the board.
And technically, your, the regulatory ordinance is really the purview of the township board. Your public hearing's gonna be specifically over the zoning ordinance, but since it refers to this, it'll also be part of, I think you, you'll be building your record because you're gonna get a lot of comments on, on the general ordinance also. But just be advised that the actual action coming out of the planning commission is for the zoning ordinance and more ordinance amendment based upon the standards set forth in this general ordinance. And the general ordinance obviously will be what the, the board ultimately adopts.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Okay, raise your hand please and state your, come on up and state your name and address. I was gonna say wrong way.
I don't wanna cough up here.
Does this work? Okay.
Oops.
My name is Dan McElwain. I own eight, six, four, sixth Fandara. You guys have called it the problem house, all kinds of issues, these kinds of things. I think we've been painted in a negative light and I don't think that the claims have quite been accurate. They say that there's been twenty-two phone calls to the police. There's been twenty complaints. Have you guys heard this? Have you, have you reviewed it, seen it, acknowledged any of these claims? Maybe validated that any of them were real? With twenty-two claims, how many people would you expect to make those claims? Cause seventeen of them came from one person. I got the nine-one-one calls. I have the police reports. I have the timestamps of when they were called. I have their responses. They're there within twenty minutes every time. Of those, no problems found. I have all of them right here, report after report after report. Somebody earlier said the police are sick of noise complaints. You can tell, cause in the reports, they get pretty annoyed pretty quick. I've talked to these officers, their names are in here. They feel quite strongly about what's happening. They, they know it's bogus. I've been rolling cameras for two years. I have video footage of everything. I've been painted as an absent owner. I am there all the time. I own this home with my dad. I have a four-year-old son, he comes up there, we mop floors together. This is not what it's being made out to be. And I have stacks and stacks and stacks of paperwork that proves this. I rented eighty-seven days last year. I didn't even hit your ninety threshold. They sued the previous owners of the house in eighty-nine, they sued him again in twenty-ten and they're doing it again now. There, this will continue to be a problem whether I abide by ordinance or not. I have all the nine-one-one calls. My biggest concern is the same person who made seventeen of them states that she's been instructed to do so by Independence Township. So somebody in Independence Township is telling her to call the cops consistently. Now, these cops have body cameras, it's rolling twenty-four seven. If, if this is real, surely there's evidence. I mean, surely if we're gonna regulate thirty-five thousand people in Independence Township based on one bad problem house being mine, that I've poured my soul and heart and everything into, I'm up there all the time. I have stitches on my hand because I was there three days ago and cut myself. I'm not an absent owner. Right? We, we talk about hotels and everything else. Marriott owns eighty-one thousand short-term rentals. They're getting into the game too. Nothing in this ordinance says anything about them or them coming in. Right? They, they have stake in the game, they're not sitting on the sidelines. We have fifteen thousand people coming to an amphitheater, we have a hotel for eighty rooms. What do we expect to do with these people when they leave the community? Right? The, the people who were earlier with Mel's Grill was concerned about drinking and driving, a bar in the neighborhood. What do you think these people do? They, they need places to stay. I've read the entire proposal that Mr. Carlyle put together. As somebody who's been doing this for two and a half years, and, and, don't get me wrong, it's, it's been very hard, like blood, sweat and tears hard. A lot of lessons learned that I think that maybe you can work into that. So I guess let me start with this unless there's any questions. Okay.
I, I, is, is this the house where the fire pit was left unattended?
Yeah, yep. And that was me. And that was, the first two nine-one-one calls for home ordinance burning, um, were dismissed and they, we left early and that was one. So out of twenty-two phone calls, fire pit, that was me, not a renter, me the owner. So, you're asking for a new home occupation class, but how can we consider it a home occupation if we restrict workdays to twenty-four percent of the year? By limiting short-term rentals to ninety days annually, at least in home occupation class one and two, they're entitled to work year-round, whereas this would restrict everybody to three months a year. Furthermore, by requiring a resident owner to occupy the dwelling for six months or more a year, but further limiting them to ninety days creates a three-month gap in occupancy. If I stayed there for six months and rented out for three, what do I supposed to do with the other three months? I think it can maybe be revised for a hundred and eighty days. If I rent more than twenty-eight days continuous to one group, does that count against my short-term rental days? If we define short-term rentals as twenty-eight days or less, if somebody stays thirty, does that come out of my ninety? The reason I ask this is, we had a group of engineers stay with us for sixty days. So I, I just don't know, like, is twenty-eight days the threshold? Or if they go thirty, is that no longer a short-term rental? If, furthermore, can people stay if there's no money exchanged? Like can my brother use the property for a week or two? My sister, my neighbor? Where does that end? Can I use an online property swap or timeshare website like Home Exchange where residents freely trade residents for periods of time with no monetary gain made? This, furthermore, this fails to address occupancies that are listed that do not have floor plans or bedrooms. People rent anything from boats to tents to campers to RVs. How do we monitor those properties? Will they need to provide floor plans as well? In regards to limiting occupancy to six adults, I think this can be revised. In twenty-twenty, when COVID hit and in an attempt to save lives, we took drastic measures and limited gatherings to ten people. We sacrificed community in order to keep people alive. However, in this new proposal, short-term renters have become such an issue, we must limit occupancy to no more than six adults. And if you have seven, you can be put into jail for up to ninety days according to this ordinance. So I've got cameras that roll twenty-four seven, three, six, five, I have footage of everything, every nine-one-one call, I have footage that goes along with it. So while I police quite a bit and know exactly what's happening, I think it's gonna be really hard to, to monitor and, and know that I have up, up to a ninety-day jail sentence if, if I'm not, i- if I make a mistake, if I'm at a hospital or something. Last year, we had a guest stay whose great-great-great-grandfather built the home in Fandara. She stayed there with her eight grandkids. This year, when she comes back, I have to tell her she can only bring her five favorites? That, that's what we're saying? As you can tell, I'm passionate about this. I personally think if someone has a big house on ten acres, they should be able to have more guests because of the location and more densely populated residents should be restricted to guest limitations. Ten people in an apartment is absurd, but ten people on ten acres isn't. So I suggest you maybe take a tiered approach, right? Like that's maybe the move? Right? One suggestion I know, I may make. We changed our business model because of problems. Institute a two-night minimum. It, it removed all our headaches. It, it made things incredibly easier. You get rid of all your partiers, all your problems. Just do a two-night minimum. That's it. Nobody parties on two-nighters. They don't, they, they party on one-night rentals. That, I think that's, may not be popular, especially at Pine Knob, where I could definitely, I could definitely, if I was in this for profit, go to one night, take all the partiers and, and deal with it. I don't, I don't want that headache. This is not supposed to be hard. I'm trying to help people out. This is a community. The reason I decided to do this is when I got married, I had nowhere for people to stay. Right? I had families from Florida, California, Texas, all parts of the world. Everybody just wanted to be together. Why can't you be together? Right? These, these are reasonable people, parents, grandparents. Not, not everybody is painted in that light. My guess, regardless of what some of the neighbors have thought, even though they haven't approached me, even though I'm there all the time, even though my phone number's posted, I'm readily available, fifteen-minute drive? Nobody, not a single person here has talked to me about it. Although I've caught them trespassing and taking pictures and harassing guests, because I have that footage as well.
Let's not get into.
Okay, okay.
And, and sir, Ms. Chairman, please suggest to the speaker he address the planning commission.
Sure thing.
Not individuals in the crowd.
Um, furthermore, if someone owns a short-term rental and say they don't want to deal with this ordinance, they just want to pivot to a different model, like a transitional home or a halfway house or something like that where people stay thirty, sixty, ninety days. They're free to operate without capacity limitations, but we, we have to restrict rentals? There's no verbiage addressing the larger threat to the community, which is all the last seller here is corporations buying up single-family houses. Blackstone owns sixty-one thousand houses, Progressive Residential owns eighty-three thousand single-family residential homes. Marriott owns sixty thousand properties that they operate as hotels. We own a short-term rental in Independence Township. We've had building, planning, and zoning officials walk through. They've looked at every square inch. They've told me what I've done right, what I've done wrong. I mean, it, it was so phenomenal for him to walk in and go, oh, you missed a smoke detector in this hallway. This hallway needs one. I mean, he's looked at every square inch of my property. There's nothing going on inside of there that the city or township doesn't know about. I have all the email correspondences with building, planning, zoning. I have all the email correspondences with code of enforcement. I have everything. This has been going on for two years. Every time I've gotten a complaint, they've got a response immediately. I mean, twenty-two phone calls to the cops, no warnings, no citations, no tickets, nothing. When you read these police reports, you start to see what is being painted. These complaints, seventeen by one lady, five by one gentleman. Every single one has come back, no issue, no party, no noise found. Some of the claims are outlandish. There's twenty cars in the road and they're shooting fireworks. Cops arrive twelve minutes later, all is quiet. I think that we're starting to get an understanding and an idea of what's happening up there. My biggest concern with that is the caller continues to say that she's been instructed by the township, time and time and time again, that they told her to do this, that she used to get the place under control. So, I think I'm the only short-term rental owner in Independence Township here tonight, but if you were to book a place to stay, there's two-hundred-and-sixty-two of them that you can take right now. I don't think a lot of people know that this is going on. I wasn't aware of the February eighth meeting or the December tenth meeting that they were at. So, I guess what I'm trying to say here is, I'm doing this with my family, for my family, as a family. If I was in this for profit, I would lower my prices, right? I, I, I operated at eighty-seven days last year. I could have been booked full if I wanted to be. I turned down a lot of people. I do. You, you can see the problems coming from far away. We've been lied to. We did have one guest totally falsified, right? Fake name, fake number, fake everything. Operate on a few websites and, you know, we, we do our best, but I know every guest that's staying. I have their information, constant contact, so. I mean, that was really all I had to say tonight and, you know, I, I hope you guys take this from somebody who's, I've been painted in a really negative, bad light here. I'm the problem house, the issue on Thandara, everybody knows about, you know, one bad apple, so we have to regulate thirty-five thousand people. I'm here telling you, we're not a bad apple. What's going on up there isn't what is being said. So, feel free, we're there all the time, come by, feel free, take a tour. The home's a hundred and ten years old. It's awesome. It's phenomenal. Right? It's just, I'm just so disappointed in the community, like, we're there all the time, right? The thing about our neighbors is there's a lot of them that like us, right? Like, we've had neighbors rent the house, stay, right? It's, it's not all of them. Our immediate neighbors don't have any problems at all. They think it's great. They love that we fixed the place up. So, with that being said, there's a history of issues with this house. Regardless of this ordinance, the township will continue to have a history of issues because of who's complaining. It's not about the outcome. So, with that being said, if you guys have any questions, I, you know, more than welcome to answer them.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Thank you. Commission, heard the comments?
I, I would just make one comment about like any township official that would tell people to call the law enforcement. That's would be their only choice since we are talking about how limited our ability is to regulate this. So I would probably do the same thing, just say call the cops to.
Call the cops, right? Like, they're doing something illegal, hey guys, call the cops, you're my neighbors. Call the cops, right? If there's something bad going on, call the cops. Nobody wants that in a neighborhood. But you're calling the cops at eight forty-five in the afternoon and saying like, well, they're, they're real loud. Was there any music? There's no music. The nine-one-one dispatchers, I mean, it's hysterical, they've had it.
Do you have handles?
I would love to just give you a data drop of everything.
I, I didn't know if you had a packet.
Um, I have some things if you'd like to take a look.
I mean, if it's your only copy.
Oh, no, no. I've got plenty of them, as well as documents I've sent to the city for approved parking and, and everything else. Here's a copy of all the nine-one-one calls, police reports. Would you like it?
Unless you're gonna keep it.
I'll keep it.
Well, it has to be given to everybody.
Okay.
It has to be.
You have to have one to everybody.
It, it has to be given to.
Everybody will have one.
Yeah, it has to be given to everybody and it has to be made available to the public.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you so much for.
Brian, for the sake of email, can I ask him to send it to you and you forward it to us?
Correct.
Well, that's how it always goes. I don't, I don't want emails from anybody else.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
I BCC everybody, so nobody knows.
There you go.
All right.
That's how we do it.
Um, question on the, the, I had the same question on the twenty-eight days versus thirty. My assumption is, at, at the point it exceeds that, it, it will fall under the long-term rental that we're trying to get done, but.
It's, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's a consecutive days not to exceed a total of ninety. Many ordinances are written this way. It doesn't have to be written this way.
But no, it's, it's twenty, twenty-eight consecutive days, it classifies it as, where does it say? If it's under twenty-eight consecutive days, it's a short-term rental. You say that somewhere in here.
Yes, but, yes, I mean, to be classified as a short-term rental, but not to exceed a total of ninety days.
I think anything over twenty-eight days, doesn't it require a hotel tax?
Could be, yeah.
I think that's what it is.
What, what happens if like somebody rents it for thirty-two days?
Well, they're, they're violating, they would be violating the ordinance as we define short-term rental.
But then they're renting it as a long-term and there's no ordinance on a long-term rental. That's, that's why this whole thing is just.
I, 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 to me, it, the way it's written, it sounds like if it is over twenty-eight days, it doesn't fall under this ordinance.
I see what you're saying, yeah, it does say that.
Okay, well, maybe that needs to be clarified. I, I, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Okay. So I, next step, you'll continue to redraft and we'll talk about it again.
You've gotten a slice of the conundrum, so we're stating.
I just, it's not forcible. And it'll only be used to enforce the ones that get a bunch of complaints, whether the complaints are valid or not valid.
Well, listen, you know, so far I haven't heard any suggestions of how to address the issue. All I've heard about what you don't like about the issue.
File it in this, file it in the thing behind me here. That's just tall, in this, this round. And put teeth into a ticketed noise ordinance or something. You know, a ticket has to be issued. I don't, I don't know.
I believe it does need regulation, short-term rental.
Brian, are there three, two-hundred-and-sixty-two in the township that?
We've, we've scanned Verbo and, and he's not wrong.
Yeah, you can go on the Verbo on the Airbnb site and do a search.
Cat's out of the bag, so to speak.
You know, in, in regards to the, I, the gentleman raises many, many interesting facts, interesting points and opinions, okay? It's, it's a lot of opinion because, and, and that'll, that, it's his right to do that. That's why we have public meetings. The fact that the corporate entities are involved in it is irrelevant from that standpoint. I mean, of course they're gonna be in the business. That's not what we're dealing with here. That's not what we should be concerned about here. What we should be concerned about is if we do have a problem, and that is up to use commissioners to decide, if there is a problem, then you have no means of regulating it at this point in time. And this was not, means to say this, I brought this issue to the township's attention when Mr. Kittle was supervisor. And the reason this has become such a big issue, and specifically Mr. Gally, is because the legislature has attempted to take away any kind of local control. And that's why so many communities have developed regulations like this, is because under, you know, special interest pressure, the legislature has tried to chip away at one more element of what you should be deciding as a local unit of government. If you want to have short-term rentals and don't want to regulate them, that's up to you. That's your choice. You shouldn't have the legislature be, you know, telling you that it's always just a residential use of property when we all know that it isn't.
So on that note, we passed some sort of ordinance in sixty, ninety days, and in a hundred and twenty days, the state says, no, this is how.
It, it could happen, Brian, but, but they.
So you're, you're saying all this pressure is on Lansing and they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it, so we're gonna do this and they're gonna do it anyways.
Been going on for ten years and they, they, you know, it gets very close and then they don't pass it. So, you know, could it happen? Yes. Do I anticipate that they're going to? Not immediately, because, but under the current administration, but it could happen at some point in time. And then you're right, we have to modify what we do.
Well, I, personally, I think they are creating a problem around the, around the world, the country. They're, in many neighborhoods are driving prices of homes out of the market where the local people can't afford it. I read an article in, in, about Montreal, different ci, different environment, but these big equity funds are buying up condos and apartments, and they're evicting people in apartments. And they're renting them as Airbnbs. So apartment rental rates have gone through the roof and people can't afford to live there. You know, we all like our property values go up, but you gotta realize with the long-term consequences. You go over the west side of the state and you got school districts that are hiring new teachers and they can't find a place to live that they can afford. It's a problem. Those cities over there are looking for ways to build housing that average workers can afford. So it, it is a problem.
I, I would just like to say, it will do us no good to put in regulations if we can't enforce it. So, you know, I don't know if enforcement will be, if we can't enforce it, what good is it? So, I would just say that should be something that we are capable of enforcing if we do it.
Okay.
No recommendation, correct?
Not yet at this point.
Yep. Gotcha.
I think, you know, I, you brought us a couple of really interesting points for refinement. And, you know, and again, to be fully, you know, you know, there may be some properties and this may be one of them that is not gonna comply, be able to comply with this ordinance. And, and, you know, I'm not opposed, if, if the commission is, is, you know, is in, you know, believes that of looking at even another avenue to address those kinds of circumstances. But, you know, I, I'm, having been in this community for forty-three years, I'm, I'm aware, it's a very unique piece of property. I understand that.
All right, shall we move on to the next agenda item?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes. Everybody had an opportunity.
Wait, wait, wait. Master plan discussion?
Master plan.
Master plan.
Ah, you're right, I'm sorry.
There's a comment.
Can we, would we, would it be okay with the?
Hold on a sec, we, we had somebody up here wants to comment. Who wants to comment on, uh, remote?
Yes, Norberg Freshke, seven-one-nine-nine Deer Lake Court. Um, I, Ms. Belinda Billings mentioned it already. Why isn't this a zoning and district issue? Uh, a lot of cities, cities where we live have a place in Flor, Florida. If you're not in the right district, you can't rent it out as an Airbnb. It's a residential district. That's what it, what it is. I don't want to have my neighbor being able to rent out the place when it's a residence. And I'm not sure why we're not taking the approach. I haven't been involved from, from the start, but why is this not a zoning issue and ordinance issue? That was my question.
Mr. Kyla, you want to answer that? I think I, I can, but.
That's, you know, he raises this as a, as another complete, a completely, another approach. I am including, you know, zoning ordinance provisions that do classify it as a home occupation. Other communities, you know, there have been communities that have taken a much more restrictive approach, but have, have had much more difficulty defending those types of approaches. And township attorney may want to opine about that a little bit further, but, you know, the problem partly is, is this has become so pervasive that, you know, you really, listen, we wrote, we wrote the short-term rental ordinance for the city of Ann Arbor. I know every single possible issue that probably is. The, it's cer, certainly, I mean, we have the largest stadium in the state in our backyard. So I know exactly what you're saying about this, and I know what this gentleman was saying, and I know what the residents are saying. Uh, it is not an easy problem to solve. So what you have to do, if you're going to regulate them, you need to regulate it in the most reasonable manner possible that protects the rights of the individual that owns the house to a reasonable extent and protects the neighbors that live around that. That's the best answer I can possibly give you. And something that's determined to be unreasonable would be challenged.
Well, from what I've read about it, and maybe the gentleman is talking about this, he mentioned Florida. Some of these municipalities, they are applying it to certain zoning districts that tend to be in more of a vacation area versus long-term occupant area. And they do that by zoning. The Montreal one I mentioned was a historic district. And they get a lot of visitors. So they applied this ordinance to apply to that zoning district.
Ours was an entertainment overlay. So the zoning stayed the same, but you could only use short-term rentals in that entertainment overlay.
Okay. Okay, master plan.
I, I was gonna say, um, you know, we, we've had the township attorney, Morgan, here, and, and it was really related to the issue of the tree ordinance. And I'm wondering if, because I doubt if we're gonna get into a detailed discussion of the master plan. Mr. Chairman, it's up to you, obviously, but I wanted just to introduce it and, you know, suggest an approach. I'm wondering if it would be acceptable to the commission if we could just move on to the tree ordinance and then come back to the master plan.
But I, yes, at one point you mentioned having a special meeting to.
That's correct, and that's why I'm.
And I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
I would like that done sooner than later.
Yep.
And if it can't be done sooner, then maybe we should do it today.
Okay. It's, it's up, it's your prerogative. We, we can continue on as agenda is written, but I'm just.
I, 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 it's a lot of reading. I haven't read the whole thing yet. I'm probably.
I doubt if anybody has.
Yeah.
And if you have, you get a really big gold star.
Well, I've been trying really hard, but I haven't got.
But I did want to do, I did want to speak to it tonight and give you a flavor and, and some suggestions in terms of how you might want to approach it.
The master plan?
Correct.
Well, why don't you do that briefly?
Okay, so.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Gally made a great suggestion because, you know, the problem that with, you know, the particular di, you know, the manner in which this, this document is organized and always has been, has been in, in design, not in word, okay? So showing it in a, it's a type of software. It's a, it's a, it's a publishing type of software. And to avoid the expense to the township of, you know, doing multiple. And to avoid the expense to the township of, you know, doing multiple drafts with corrections in it, we felt that that really wasn't going to be beneficial. Because frankly, I'd like to have you read the entire document, because you're going to be the people enforcing it. What I did do is provide a detailed list of comments for you to concentrate in, in terms of where there are changes in the master plan and how we've addressed that. Obviously, since the last master plan was done in two thousand and fifteen, there's a lot of data in there that had to be updated. Everything from demographic data to road infrastructure and the like. So obviously, there is, you know, the master plan is a document that not only gives you direction in terms of how you're going to look at the future, it also has data in it to help you better understand the community as it is today also. Things like the existing land use map and the inventory had to be updated. Some of the mapping had to be updated. Many of the goals are very similar or the same as to what they've done. We've changed the format significantly because we wanted to make it more informational and educational for the user. So you're going to see throughout this document, a lot, you know, a lot greater use of what are sort of sidebar discussions, where these are sort of short informational discussions. And for example, one of the common questions that you always get is confusion between the zoning ordinance and the master plan. And in the very beginning of this document, this lays out very clearly what the difference of the two are. The, and so essentially, that's how the document is organized. The elements of the plan, in terms of every section of the plan, is very similar to the current plan, but obviously, some of the language is different because it's been updated, or there have been things that have been completed that are now no longer relevant.
It's a faster read, for sure.
Pardon me?
It's a faster read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've tried to make it more user-friendly, because particularly, most people are now, are going to go online, and they're going to use that. That's how they're going to use it. So you've got to make it a friendlier document. So standpoint approach, that's, that's, that's a general overview of how we've approached it, and we've indicated to you where the changes have been. There's another major element that I'm, I have done a more extensive section on that is, that is not in this draft. It's only partially in this draft, but we, at the commission's direction and at the board's direction, did a much more extensive public participation effort in this particular plan. We had a survey. You'll see the summary results of that survey. We had several focus groups. We did a video that was broadcast on Independence Television regarding, is it posted on, yeah, it's posted on the website. And we just, we wanted to reach out to people that would normally not participate, you know, and try to get input. You know, we set up a table at Clarkston Football Tailgate, you know, so that we could talk to young families directly. We went to the seniors and had a focus group session. We had a joint meeting between the CIA and the DDA to talk about the two major quarters. So we tried to do a little bit different things, but tried to get more public, more input in that regard. That isn't even, that's only the start of the public input, because the public input really begins when you, as a commission, begin to review this document and begin to receive public comment on it. So what I would suggest is that, you know, you have an opportunity to go through this, make notes, and then we need to have a dedicated workshop to really answer your questions and receive your suggestions on this entire plan. For those of you that serve on special committees, I want you to concentrate on the green infrastructure, open space element, for example, because that, I beefed that section up some, so to speak, talking about the open space committee in that document. A lot of the concepts in there are still the same as what they were before, but I talk a little bit more directly about the open spacing. In the target plans, I talk about the DDA, and I talk about the corridor improvement authorities more specifically. So there's more information in that regard. So I think, as an overview, that's probably what I want to say. But again, I, look at the notes, okay, that I provided, memo I provided. Read through the plan. I don't think it's a long read from that standpoint, because it's very graphic in its nature. And then we'll set up a special working session to really delve into it. And at the point that you are comfortable to present a draft document out to the public, that's when we can start receiving public comment. Now formally, what happens when you are ready, after you've held a public hearing, and you're ready to release the plan for broader public comment, you have to submit this plan to the township board. The township board has to agree to release the plan, and there's a sixty-day review comment period where it's sent to all of the neighboring jurisdictions and the county for review. And, but that doesn't happen until after you have a document in which you are comfortable with. You can't really be comfortable with it until you've had more public input and more of the input. So that's the drill, and I don't expect that it's going to be done in a month. So let's be realistic about it. You've got to fit it into your normal business. And, but, we certainly don't want to be a year, a year from now, and hopefully, and not have had, not have had this about. So is there any questions?
Soon. Yes, soon. A question, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, by soon, I mean, maybe when we get into the, you know, a little bit into the tree ordinance. I'm just beginning to see a lot of these things you mentioned up, the Greenway Plan and whatnot, so forth. But, you know, last night, we sat and we talked, we had, we were talking to the lady from the, Lou Heron, the conservative, conservative. Well, as you know them well, I guess. And their concerns and your concerns in the master plan and other people's concerns are getting together into an effort to, and to document where we're going and why we save trees, for instance. I'm not going to get into the tree ordinance, but I mean, we save trees, we control invasive species, we control native species, we want to protect the wildlife. It's all together, and it's all, you know, and you've got a little bit in this plan, we got a little bit in some of the stuff that we're doing, and, but it's all coming together.
Right.
It's good that it is. As a matter of fact, I guess I just mentioned, because it's not on the agenda, but I will anyways. One of our members who's on the board, you know, wants to get together.
Yeah.
And you, as you know that, the planning commission and Row Act and the board.
Right.
And we can talk about some of these things, and probably the master plan is something on that agenda.
That'd probably be a good vehicle.
As well, so this is all good. This is all good.
You know, again, Mr. Gally being sort of the veteran here on the board along with Mr. Ritchie, raised another good question, and it was, this seemed to be different this time around than your previous experience with going through the master plan. And you're right, it was a lot different. And part of the reason was, we, we've had substantial, we've had three township supervisors during, from the time we started this to where we are right now. We've had changeover in the township board, and we've had substantial change in the planning commission. So every time that we tried to be moving things forward, there was a lot of dynamics. I'm not, this is not an excuse, but it is a good reason why timing of rolling a lot of this stuff out just didn't seem to make sense until we had some stability, you know, on all different boards at this point. So that's the best explanation, Brian, I can, I can give you. And it's, at least, I think, a pretty realistic thing of what's happened, so.
I would like to ask everybody, like, in an effort to provide some timeline for a meeting, like we're talking, what do you, what do you guys need to get through this? Two weeks?
I've already, I'm far through half of it now. I'll be ready in two weeks.
I've read it twice.
Must be a fast reader. Is it possible within, after, in about two weeks, we could?
Yeah, I guess we have to make a decision as to whether we want to have the training workshop or the master plan workshop. Or we could combine both.
That's my thought.
What, how long do you think you need for both?
I think, I think we can do each in an hour, so it'll be about a two-hour, a two-hour, well, the master plan, you'll have to decide about that. We can do the training part in an hour. No doubt, no doubt about it.
I would suggest, let's start off with the training.
Okay.
And get into the master plan, and if it gets drawn out and appears to be it's going to take longer, then we'll have to do session two.
Okay.
That's a good approach, yeah.
Break down my sections of the master plan, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else on master plan? Okay, now I think we're approval of minutes.
Is everyone available two weeks from today, the fourth Thursday?
When's the date? What's the date?
Twenty ninth, I think, is it?
That's spring break.
It is Clarkston, right, but. Twenty eighth.
I am.
Twenty eighth, yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah. Good.
Okay.
You good?
In the evening?
Should we write, should we put it in?
Yes.
What time?
I think we need to start earlier.
Five o'clock.
Is that possible?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That means food, Brian.
Got it.
Crave, please.
That means food.
What's the date? The twenty-sixth, you said?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Brian, crave, please.
I don't have that much money on the budget.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Motion, please, or changes, corrections.
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consultants report tree ordinance.
Prefacing that, we've got, I think, an issue here that we need to resolve, because I have been concerned, and I did express to the chair, that with the presence of the open space committee, three members of the planning commission and two members of the township board, the division of responsibilities and responsibilities, the division of responsibilities needs to be made clear. And the potential conundrum that we have, the three members of the planning commission sitting on a committee that is making recommendations on regulatory issues to the planning commission. For you three that are on the planning commission, I mean, your role, Tom's already been on it, but Bill and Joe, from your standpoint, your role is legally defined, and this is why we've asked the township attorney to be here, by law, in terms of what your responsibilities are. So as we move forward and all of these, and this is just the first of potentially many issues, we've got to make sure that we're not creating, you know, that we are being open and transparent about everything that we do, and second of all, that we don't create a conflict for the three members of the planning commission, who have, by, have to be objective in everything that comes before you by nature. So do you want to, we did ask Mr. Kelly's office, and Morgan is here tonight, to lay out an opinion for the planning commission so that we know what we need to do moving forward, and that roles and responsibilities are becoming crystal clear.
On that point, I think that our intent was to at least open up the discussion of these issues in this joint meeting between, you know, Row Act, planning commission, and the board.
Yeah.
It was to, it was to go over the processes and procedures to just clarify those things.
Well, here's, Joe, here's where the problem comes up. The problem comes up is that it's, you have a committee, an ordinance committee. No problem for that ordinance committee to be making, like, recommendations or requests of the planning commission to study something. It's a whole different thing when you decide you're going to write an ordinance.
Let me just stop you right there. Okay, that happened, or that started to happen, but that's not where we are now, as of last night.
Well, that's not the communication that I just received.
Well, I don't know what you just received, but I'm telling you, what we did last night was to come up with topics that we wanted to bring to the planning commission to suggest that.
It said that you were going to take it to the board and receive, you know, and receive your authority to move on to writing an ordinance. And that's not the way.
Writing, there's no such thing as authority to go ahead and write an ordinance.
All right.
Believe me, I was the chair of it, I know what I'm doing.
Well, that's, that's good to hear, because that's why, that's what, that's what's raised the conflict here.
Okay.
That misunderstanding.
That is not what's going to happen. Now, all we want to do is provide advice, like the purchase of thirty-eight acres or whatever the heck that was, that we did. We did provide some advice on some other topics that we were directly asked to by the board.
Right.
You know, so I guess the planning commission can ask Row Act, the board can ask Row Act. All we do is research, research, we don't write regulations. You know, we did that once, and, you know, and it was turned down, and you guys got copies of it, and we abandoned that, and, and now we're just suggesting, asking for direction.
Where it becomes different is when you are taking a position as a planning commissioner, when you're sitting on this separate committee. That's where the problem is. I think that's where we have to, we, this is where we have to avoid a potential problem.
I agree with that, but I, but I don't agree that.
Can we hear what Morgan has to say, and then we can?
Okay.
Is that our idea, Chairman?
That's what we're going to do. That's exactly what we're going to do when we have that meeting, that group meeting.
So I know Brittany Ellis from our office drafted an opinion letter, and that has been submitted to you guys, so I know you're mostly aware of our opinion, but just because this is an open meeting, I will very clearly express our opinion and also allow any of you to ask questions. So the problem comes in, in that the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and also the Township Zoning Ordinance contains very, very specific requirements in order to pass and adopt a zoning ordinance. And there are only three ways that these zoning ordinances can be proposed to be drafted. The first one is by direction of the township board. The second one is by direction of all of you, the planning commission. And the third one is by a petition by some sort of resident or landowner in the township. If a third party begins suispronte drafting their own ordinance or preparing an ordinance, then that leads to conflicts between those subcommittee members and either the board or the planning commission, which, I mean, it can lead to issues in which the planning commission is voting to recommend an ordinance that they helped to draft. The township board, again, is voting to adopt an ordinance that they helped to draft. And ultimately, unless we follow the requirements of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act to a T, then we're opening the township up to litigation and challenges of the way that these ordinances were adopted. If we don't follow the procedure to a T, then the result is that the ordinances themselves could be undermined, they could not be enforceable, and we'd have to go through the process all over again. I know you guys know how, how long it takes to adopt an ordinance. You have to first come to planning commission, have a public hearing, have planning commission make a recommendation at the bare minimum, and then that goes before the township board, and there are two readings before the board. That's a lot of time to have to redo that over again, just because the initiation of an ordinance wasn't done exactly in accordance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act or the township zoning ordinances. So our recommendation as a firm would be, if a subcommittee or another body or a resident would like to see an amendment to a zoning ordinance, there'd be a petition submitted to request the same. Then the ordinance can be. Then the ordinance can be properly drafted, it can be drafted by staff, by Carlisle Wortman, by our office, whoever is going to take ownership of that, then it can properly come before the planning commission for a public hearing as it's required to. The planning commission can make a recommendation then to the board. Again, the Michigan zoning enabling act is extremely strict, and when we don't follow those requirements to a T, we open the township up to liability, which I don't think anyone here wants to do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay. Master plan, residential open space advisory committee, mission statement, to investigate, articulate, advocate, and assist the township to regulate for preservation to open space and beneficial values and quality of life. Okay, doesn't say anything in there about writing ordinances.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It does not.
Okay.
And yet we've received, we've received one draft of an ordinance, and I, and we also, one member of, of your committee offered to write the ordinance.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, he can, he can be offered to write, the board makes the decision, this group does not.
Yeah.
The board decides, if the board tells us to take this up, we're going to take it up, regardless of what the planning commission says or does, because the board has the ultimate authority. Now, that's why we're trying to get together the, the three groups and devise these procedures, but I'm listening to, we're writing regulations and we're doing it.
Joe, the board, nobody asked the open space committee to, to talk about, to look at the Woodland, the Woodlands ordinance.
Do you know that for a fact?
Yes.
Well, you're wrong, you're wrong.
The township board didn't ask you.
Yes.
The township board, no, the township board asked the planning commission.
No, you're wrong. Yeah, no, I'm not saying you're wrong in that they didn't do that, I'm just saying, we have had conversations with, with the board.
No, I understand that, but.
That said, no, don't say you understand it when you don't. You just said the board gave it to the planning commission, that's fine. You don't know that the board didn't have the same conversation with ROAC, do you?
Who, from the board?
I'm not even going to get into that discussion.
Was it the township supervisor?
I'm not even going to get into that discussion.
Let's, let's not get into that here.
But when you say the board, one person is not the board.
The one person is not the board.
Well.
The direction of the board is a formal vote of the board.
That's, and Joe, please, let's not, let's not get into.
I know what you're saying, but I'm just saying, I'm not trying to.
I'm trying, I'm trying to avoid you, and you, and you having a problem as members of the planning commission.
Uh, can I ask the attorney a question, please? Would you define propose an ordinance?
I honestly cannot define propose an ordinance. I can say when our office drafts ordinances and brings them before the planning commission or before the township board, depending on whether it's a zoning ordinance or a municipal ordinance. That is not the same as someone on the planning commission stating that we need to amend an ordinance, which I would consider to be a proposal to amend an ordinance, if that makes sense.
Petition, what involves, what's involved in a petition?
So a petition would be a formal written request to either the planning commission, the township board, or, uh, the planning division of the township.
And signed by one person, a hundred people, what?
There is no requirement under the zoning enabling act, it can be signed by one single person.
If the open space committee were to send a letter to the board asking them to consider a tree preservation ordinance and suggesting some parameters that might be included in it, would that be appropriate?
They can certainly do that, it's the drafting of the proposed ordinance.
We never, as far as I know, indicated that the current proposal, we never indicated we were going to take on drafting it. So I guess that's what we need to do.
That's right, and.
And I have to say this, I think it was extremely disingenuous of whoever is behind this. ROAC Open Space was formed several months ago, October, summer.
That was really last summer.
We submitted one ordinance, which was reviewed, maybe incorrect, incorrectly drafted, that was before I got involved in it. None of this was ever brought up before, until we put a significant amount of effort into what we generated last night. I, I am disappointed, very disingenuous.
Well, then you can blame it on me, because I, my, I'm, because I am concerned about your legal standing as planning commission members. When I, when I saw proposals coming.
Why didn't you bring it up before then?
I ran it up to you, I sent you an email about it.
When?
Two weeks ago. To you too, and I said, guys, you have to be careful about this. So, this has nothing to do with the open space, excuse me, I, I have the floor right now. This has nothing to do with the open space committee, this has to be due. The difference is, you two and you are planning commissioners, and it's the integrity of the planning commission that I have to professionally advise you about, not legally, because I have no, I'm not an attorney. But that's why I'd ask, we asked Kelly Firm to opine on this. You don't want, look, you don't want to jeopardize the, the, you know, the, the thing that you want to achieve.
Question for the lawyer.
Mm-hmm.
I, from reading the letter, and I had very few minutes to do a quick read, I did not see any mention of the fact that th- three members of the planning commission are on open space. Do you consider that an issue?
It could lead to questions of conflict of interest, and I, I believe that that's Mr. Carlyle's concern.
Now, I'll resign for a minute.
I don't think you necessarily need to, Bill, but you, what you need to understand is, you know, the avoidance of conflict of interest. See, the, the, the difference is, the planning, every bit of what the planning commission does is in a public forum. It, and, and when you're writing, when you're talking about regulations, look at what happened tonight, it has to be transparent. The open space committee is not subject to the same level of scrutiny, because you have no official authority. You're an ad hoc committee, a creation of the board.
Right.
Making recommendations is fine. Getting into specific details about ordinances is where, where now this fine line between your membership as a planning commissioner and your membership on the open space committee could be misconstrued by the public. So, I, I'm s- I'm uncomfortable with the fact that you're taking offense at this, because I'm trying to protect you as individuals and this body, the integrity of this body, and I, this is an unusual circumstance that we've had that has never occurred before in this township.
All right.
So that's.
We'll take your, your, um, recommendations to heart, and, um, we'll figure out what to do.
Okay, well, what really should be done is the planning commission should take control of this issue, if that's what you want to do.
I think we take this right back up to the supervisor and make him make some decisions.
Well, and I.
It came from the board.
He did, Joe, he did, he asked me to bring this to you.
He asks everybody the same statement. I've had that happen several times, where he says, Brian Ottman is going to come to your ROAC committee because I've ordered him to. I talked to Brian, he says, he never said that.
All right, let, let's, let's just.
Can I ask a question about the procedure she's here to talk about? Relating it to something that happened last year, the chicken ordinance, okay? She petitioned ZBA, we said no, I think she went to a board meeting and they said, we'll go to the planning commission and petition the planning commission. She did, the planning commission discussed it and voted to take it up, so that's an example of proper procedure, correct?
Yeah.
Well, and she brought a significant petition.
Oh, yeah, she, she had signatures.
Her coming to the podium.
Two hundred signatures or whatnot, yeah. So, I thought I read in here somewhere, and I could be misspeaking, and this is, this is the crux of my question. It said something about the, the planning commission can instruct staff and consultants. So I can, not I, we can say, Mr. Carlyle, research this and spend six months on it, and we don't care what it costs, without approval of the township board and budget?
No, to a certain extent.
To a certain extent, Brian has a certain budget.
Well, to a certain extent, then, I mean, the way I read this, it says, we can instruct you to do, do it.
I have authority to spend a significant amount of money, but if it's an ordinance that I know will cost a significant amount of money, then we're gonna, I'll have to take it to the board.
That's because, that's because you're responsible, in other townships and other cities, this is where stuff goes awry, and that's kind of my point with all these goody-two-shoes ordinances, yes, I know you, you're a great person, I know you, you're a great person, you guys will do the right thing. Who's going to have these jobs after you guys leave? That's why I don't trust any of this stuff, any, all this government, oh, we're trying to do good, we're trying to just get these ten percent. I, I don't like any of it. So, okay, that was my question.
Okay. We will figure out what we have to do.
I want, I want members to understand that this is not any, this is not any attempt to be critical of anybody. It's, it's trying to clarify what is an unusual situation that has come about by the makeup of this committee, pure and simple. And I think from a legal standpoint, we're concerned.
And my issue is, why was ROAC put in a place in the first place? Why wasn't this brought up when I was confirmed as a member? Why?
I, I didn't, I can't say that, I don't have, I have no idea why it wasn't brought up.
Well, w- w- we need to have a discussion with, with the township board and probably legal counsel about what our purpose is and how we proceed going forward.
I mean, you know that Bill was just reappointed just last week, I mean, along with Jerry and Kevin. Right, I mean, so if they had some big issues, why did he reappoint him? Ten days ago.
Uh, okay.
You know, I'm sure that they.
Let's, let's close the discussion, we're not gonna, we're not gonna fall, solve it here. Let's close the discussion, we, we recognize your objection and your opinion, and, and we'll proceed accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to say on three ordinance?
Well, other than, I mean, I guess, you know, at, at the request of the planning commission, I did submit to you a report. I gave you examples of, of, of some varying approaches, uh, three, I mean, they're, they provide the range of, of, of the mean, the manner in which you could regulate it. We, as many others, have written many woodland ordinances, we help communities administer them. I, I read, uh, Bill, what you sent me from the open space committee, I, I think we can include that as input. I don't necessarily agree with everything at this point, but it'll be up to the planning commission to decide. My point is, if you're going to do this, and this is ever going to take, uh, become any, uh, point of, of, uh, reality, the planning commission's got to take charge of this.
Okay. With that said, I guess I'd like to ask the planning commission if they would like to, how they'd like to proceed on a tree preservation ordinance, and if you want to say you don't want to do anything tonight, that's, that's the commission's, you know, prerogative.
I would like to say that we wait until we straighten this out with our meeting between the three. Otherwise, if, if everybody doesn't want to do that, then I would say I would make a motion that the planning commission tells ROAC to cease and desist any more work on the, on the woodland ordinance, period.
Let's, I say, let's just wait.
I would say that too.
Reston, you okay with that?
I'm okay with not doing a tree ordinance.
Okay. All right, um, I got a couple things.
It's my property, it's my trees.
Um, I wanted to discuss, under just general discussion, um, the Sashawal Walden intersection, that's already a level E of service at times to the day. We got more development coming, and I don't think we can wait for more development to come. When, when Walden is done between Baldwin and Clintonville, that's going to add a significant amount of traffic on Walden. It's going to further aggregate that intersection. I don't know what we can do, but we can't wait until more development. It, it, it's a level E, that's the worst level of, in a traffic study you can have. So, um, I'm putting that on the table. I think if we wait, it's a mistake. Second item is, I've been studying, knowing that it's coming back to the committee, I've been studying the application for the car wash, and be getting familiar with the Dixie Highway overlay district and stuff like that. And at the public meeting, or, there was a lot of talk about character and designing the building, and, and, and I agree with that. And I reviewed the master plan, I reviewed our ordinances, I reviewed their application. And our master plan does a lot of nice talk about character and design and pedestrian pathways and cross access, and I've studied the Dix- Dixie corridor, and there is none of that, it's a mismatch. And I find it disappointing that since two thousand fifteen, when we talked in our master plan about establishing a character, we have noth- none, nothing in our ordinances to try and, uh, pass some more specific, at least nothing I could find, more specific ordinances about what kind of character we want, maybe some architectural guidelines, maybe some stuff about requiring cross access, uh, agreements, putting it in there, putting in, if, if you're adjacent to a piece of property that isn't conducive to a cross access, requiring an easement, so that when someday that neighboring piece gets developed, you've got the mechanism in place. I mean, nothing's been done.
Not true, Bill.
Well.
I mean, you know, we'll respond.
I ain't found it.
Okay, but it, you know, the, the Dixie overlay district has design guidelines in it that are applicable to everything within the overlay district. It may not go as far as you want it to go. The, uh, you know, the, the township, uh, you know, does require access management and cross access. In fact, that was a case in point where there was cross access put in between the big boy and the TCF bank. But, you know, we can always do better, we can always do better. And the Dixie overlay was a response at the time, a number, number of people were on that committee to try to address the problem with all these non-conforming properties we had, how could we encourage their redevelopment?
I respect that.
Yeah, that was the bigger problem. Uh, but, you know, with the new DDA and having money to be able to do certain things, I think it's, it's a timely subject. So it's a very timely subject, and I think we could be expecting more of what we're getting. It, you know, economically, it's, it's still a very slow and, and not an attractive area to invest in at this point.
Agreed.
So, um, I think this is a great discussion that, to pass on to the DDA, uh, because they're the ones that are going to have a source of funding to incentivize some of this stuff.
Yeah, have we, question, if you don't mind, have we locked ourselves into something with the, with the car wash already?
You haven't approved it.
Okay.
Didn't we?
Got conceptual approval.
Got conceptual.
Didn't they get the special land use approval?
I believe so.
Their site plan's still up in the air.
Okay.
All right, said my piece, let's see, I would like to see it, I, I'm not.
The flip side of that coin is you become way more restrictive on Dixie Highway, and it's going to look worse in twenty years, and the same stuff that's been sitting there, so there's a tough balance.
Well, I think that's why you have a DDA, because, you know, you.
I mean, we thought we had one taken off the board that's been there forever, and they backed out, right? So, you put too many conditions on them, they walk. I'm not saying that was what happened there, but it can't happen.
It can't happen.
Okay, uh, email addresses, I, I said my piece about objecting to whoever leaked our email addresses. Um, Jose asked me if we want township email addresses.
I don't.
I don't know what's involved, Brian, how do we access them if we have one? I, I, I don't know.
We had them twelve years ago, and nobody ever used them.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't wanna tell you.
It's prob, no, no, you know.
Okay.
The, the, I, myself in the clerk's office are the only ones and maybe the supervisor's office have your emails. I, that's why I blind copy everybody on everything because, number one, you shouldn't be talking amongst yourselves. Number two, those email addresses get leaked. Now, whoever leaked it in this, that email chain, I have my suspicions, I'm not gonna say who did it, but I have my suspicions of who did it. And he likely did it. It's a he. So, I mean, because, and it's not too hard to go back in time and figure out Gally's email address and, and Jason's email address and Bill's because either it was on an application somewhere, um, you know, you can go back historically and probably track down, you know, the, the commissioners who have been on here for a while. And you guys just got appointed, so it's, I'm sure it's there somewhere, you know, um...
You know, it's really easy to find email addresses.
Well, it is, but, but.
I can find them.
But the point is, is, is we try, at least in my department, we try to keep it as controlled as possible. And, you know, when we had the township emails, number one, it's extremely expensive. Number two, you gotta configure your phone, which becomes potentially foible.
Right. That's, that's my problem, why I don't wanna deal with all that.
Yeah, it's, you know, and if, and that's why we did away with it and the control is held by the planning department. So when I send you correspondence, like, I could've, you know, I got this thing, you know, that, that piece of correspondence we got tonight, I could've sent that to you, but it was like, I mean, I got it literally today, I think. So it's like, I might as well just hand it out to you. But normally, if there's public comment like that, that I get it soon enough, I will send it out either separately or in the packet itself. So, but everybody's blind copied on this board. So, you know, the email looks like it goes to Dick and a list of people who wanna see the packet, like the clerk and deputy clerk, but you guys are in the email, just nobody sees you.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, that's the first time I've heard that he wants to get you all email addresses.
No, he, he didn't say he wanted to, he just asked.
Okay.
Cause he was talking to me about that string.
Yeah.
Enough said on that. Anybody have a different opinion?
Oh, no, not on this.
Okay. Anybody else got another topic? Yes.
I just wondered if we could get that Tendera address just to drive by there or is that not in our?
Well, it's, um, I don't know the exact address, but if you drive up there and look for a log cabin, you're gonna see it.
It's really big and long and.
I see it was a hundred and ten years old, so we probably.
Yeah.
It's under consent judgment also.
Pencil?
So.
Go ahead.
Eight six four six, Tendera, over.
There you go, there, pretty big.
Anybody else got anything they wanted to bring up?
No. You wanna see the inside, just let us know, we'll meet you there. Take care.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd love to speak for one minute here, I promise you, it won't be long. Uh, and I apologize to the board. I, I, this is the first time I've been to a board meeting and I graduated from West Technical High School in Cleveland, Ohio. In my senior year, I took five periods of foundry and one period of shop math, so I never had a civics class. So this has been a, almost like a lesson in civics for me and I do appreciate it. I appreciate it very much.
Can I, can I ask you to state your name and address?
Certainly. My name is John Bundridge. I live at one one four three oh Big Lake Road, Davisburg, Michigan, Springfield Township. Now, you're asking, what is the guy from Springfield Township doing here? I'm representing Lester Hart, she's, she's left me here, but Dorothy Hess. Dorothy Hess lives over in Fleming's Lake Road and is a wonderful eighty-four-year-old southern lady who has difficulty speaking into a microphone here and couldn't possibly get up here and speak to you on her behalf. But I would love to do that for you for just one minute. Dorothy has a property that butts up right to Polte's new development. And I realize Polte has bought that property and they have all, all the right in the world, but they've cut down all the trees, all the trees that Dorothy has been there for forty years and has enjoyed that peaceful little, it's a, it's a, it's a section of property that the Hesses own for a long, for like forty years. And she's been a part of that particular Hess family, has enjoyed that peace and quiet and things and seen the deers run through and she just loves that here. Now it's all changed. Right now, I think there's about one row of trees left, no shrubbery. You can look right out and see exactly where Polte is gonna build their homes. So it's gonna be right, I would say within fifty feet, maybe seventy-five feet of her house. That's, that's gonna be quite a difference for her and things like this. And she's really, really very, very hurt about that particular situation here. What she's asking is a privacy fence of six feet, eight feet, something that would keep maybe the noise out from the other people or keep the kids from running. I can remember when I was thirteen or fourteen, man, I was looking for the shortest way home, so I was busting through people's yards, climbing fences and everything else to get where I wanted to be here and things like this. But we're hoping that maybe that six or eight foot fence would keep people and let Dorothy have her particular privacy and the, the yard that she does have now. And with that, I'm gonna open up for questions. I don't think there probably be any questions. Brian, maybe, let me, let me say this. Brian, I think has been very, very helpful. I know she's talked to Brian several times. She's talked to the Polte representative several times and it seems that everybody is back and forth and she is, she's just worried that that privacy fence is never gonna be built.
Well, um, yeah, we, I've had several conversations with, with both people and Polte's willing to, to do what they can to assist, like they extended the fence along Walden Glen that wasn't on the site plan, but they asked to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And the Walden Glen folks said, go for it. And I know they approached Ms. Hess and met her and, and she even offered to pay for part of it. And, um, so I don't know where, where that ended.
Well, it, it's, it's ended with no, no kind, I think the last, the last conversation she had was, was a member of the Polte organization and he said, we'll, we'll get back to you here in time.
It was, I think they gave her a quote and so.
As I say, I, I am sure, having been in business a little bit myself here, I'm sure if Mr. Polte would enter this problem, he'd say, put the damn fence up and forget about it.
That, I, I think, I think in the end, there's probably gonna be a good, a good solution there.
All right.
You know, and there's, there's also a significant amount of buffer landscaping there too that will go in once the houses are built.
Well, I, I have.
But I understand she wants her fence and, you know, they, they, they corrected a lot of issues with flooding in her backyard.
Right, they did, they did. They did that.
So, they, they, they're trying to be as good a neighbors as possible.
Well, I, I appreciate that. As I said, it was just, I think the lack of communication from somebody here, maybe Polte was the last person she talked to.
Probably.
That didn't, has not got back to her in, in over a month. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I said before, this has been a wonderful lesson in civics for me. That's why I, when I first started, I was gonna talk, I was gonna talk to the whole audience and not, Lester Hart, stay here and listen to my talk, you and things like this.
Even with a Cleveland Indian sweatshirt, you can.
Well, yeah, I, I, as I said, I grew up in, I grew up in Cleveland, Cleveland Indians, well, I'm not even sure their new name now, but I'm Cleveland Indians fan, Cleveland Browns. But I still, I, I was, I was with Detroit here just last football season, so I didn't know that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty-five, please.
Second?
Yes, I get it.
All approved. Aye.
Aye.
Post, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morgan, can I get your email address?
Yeah, of course.
Hey, Brian.